This is Mayor Protem Worthington. I'm calling the regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Monday, June 7, 2021 to order. We are conducting our meeting remotely in compliance with the special Open Public Meeting Act rules issued by Governor Inslee's emergency order. Reminder to the public, participation in the public comments and public testimony on public hearings portion of this meeting will continue to be accepted by email. Comments received by 5:30 PM deadline will be electronically provided to City Council for their consideration. And subject to technological limitations, the council will also accept telephonic comments. Members of the public can call 1-509-342-7253, conference ID 116519691. For those calling in, please be advised that calls will be taken in the order received. Before I start our meeting this evening, I have some unfortunate news to share with not only our council but with our city as a whole. I am regretfully announcing the passing of Gerald Garing, former City of University Place Council member. He died peacefully on June 4th, surrounded by his family after a two-year-long battle with cancer. He was elected to the University Place City Council for several terms, beginning in 1998 until 2011. He served as UP's mayor from 2006 to 2008. He participated directly in the planning to improve the University Place Town Center and with Pierce County's efforts to build Chambers Bay Golf Course within the city limits. He was a thoughtful, engaged, and civic-minded community leader that earnestly tried to find solutions to problems for people of all economic and social backgrounds. Many, including myself, will always remember Gerald during his public service as one whose attitude as a public servant was one of giving back to the community and never about himself. He was truly a gentleman council member whose love for his city is evidenced in the contributions he made to help this great city we see today. Let's have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Councilmember Figueroa, present.
Councilmember Keel.
Councilmember Keel, present.
Councilmember Protem Lee.
Councilmember Protem Lee, present.
Councilmember McCluskey.
Councilmember McCluskey here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming here.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Mayor Protem Worthington, present.
Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. May I please have you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, the next item on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. May I call for a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move for approval of this evening's agenda.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to the motion? Okay, not seeing any motion carries unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is our public comment section. As of 5:30 this evening, we did not have any public comment submitted. And as far as I'm aware, we do not have anybody on our call at this time that is from the public, so I will close the public comment section. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Mayor Belisi, Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move for approval of the consent agenda distributed.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Yeah, I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to the motion? Okay, not hearing or seeing any, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Our next item is our public hearing. It is on items that we have previously discussed at a study session. And that is our multifamily tax exemption for Town Center South. May I ask our attorney, Matt Kaser, to come forward with a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Matt Kaser, City Attorney. I'm also joined on the call by Kevin Brisky, our Community and Economic Development Director. As the mayor alluded to in her preliminary remarks, this is the time and place set for a public hearing regarding the establishment of the proposed South Town Center Residential Target Area. This is a statutorily required hearing under the provisions of RCW 8414040. My understanding from the city clerk is that it also has been separately duly noticed in accordance with law with the Tacoma News Tribune. To briefly recap, what the action in front of you is tonight, the city of University Place has previously had two residential target areas for the purposes of extending multifamily tax exemptions. The first has been long established, which has been the one for the main town center. The second is an action which the council took several months ago with respect to the Northeast Business District. The third that is in front of you, the proposed one in front of you tonight, is to establish the South Town Center. The initial proposal has discussed in front of the council, the last council meeting during study session, would be to establish the proposed RTA in the boundaries between 40th and 44th Street, roughly coinciding with the new mixed-use zoning that council passed back in December. In the course of council questions and the discussion during the study session, there was expressed a desire for an alternative proposal before council to shrink those or to realign those contours of the proposed RTA. Both maps are available for your consideration tonight in your council package. The original is marked as Exhibit C. The proposed alternative is marked as a substitute exhibit C. Has this matter been thoroughly discussed throughout the course of the study session? At this point, unless Mr. Brisky wants to chime in with any respect to this other staff presentation, at this point, I'm happy to yield the floor and turn this matter back to council, as well as to any members of the public that may wish to comment.
Okay, given that this is a public hearing and the public comment section needs to be brought to everyone's attention, I am not aware of any emails that we have received in response to this public hearing, nor are any members of the public online at this time to voice their opinion. So I will close the public comment section and ask for a motion for consideration so that we can have council discussion.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington. Public comment section is closed. And I move for the approval of multifamily tax exemption as presented. I'm going to follow that with a request, if there's a second, for a request for an amendment as well.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. We are now open for discussion.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington again. I would move for an amendment to the main motion that would substitute exhibit, which would change the boundaries as proposed to what is now depicted as substitute exhibit C. One of the primary distinctions is which the boundaries stop at Bridgeport, do not extend over Bridgeport.
Do we have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, so that item is up for discussion at this time. Let's use our, raise our hands. Okay, Councilmember Figueroa, you have raised your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Worthington, be more specific as to changing the boundary line. I didn't understand movement on Bridgeport.
Mayor, if I may, I can.
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Figueroa. And so in our packet is a alternative description of that. So, excuse me, earlier this evening before the meeting in the brief time we had, one of the things we talked about was background noises in dog squeaky toys, which I think is now being captured. Okay, so the squeaky toy has now been surrendered by one of my dogs. Back to the matter at hand, which is, in our packets this evening distributed, was a substitute diagram. I think it was labeled substitute exhibit C. And the primary distinction between exhibit C and the substitute exhibit C is the boundary for the tax exemption ends at Bridgeport and does not cross over to the, excuse me, to the west side of Bridgeport. The boundaries to the north and to the south remain as originally proposed, but the boundary on the west side does not extend beyond Bridgeport. We may have a staff member that has some ability to put that on the screen if need be. Certainly, we want the council to see.
Yeah, with the council's indulgence, I can share screen and elaborate further so you visually have it.
Thank you.
So. While you're doing that, Councilmember Worthington, your amendment is to utilize the alternative?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
And hopefully, my version is showing, the original exhibit C is what you're seeing on screen here. The proposed exhibits, and both of these are in your council packet, the proposed exhibit C is on the next page. The key difference, as Councilmember Worthington alluded, spoke to, is that the area to the west of Bridgeport between 40th and 44th is removed. The parcels on the east side of Bridgeport remain the same.
Okay, so would you, Councilmember Worthington, would you explain why you would see it necessary to remove the west side of Bridgeport, the way it's shown?
Yes, if I may, Mayor.
Yes.
The purpose of that is to, in a sense, limit the area that is provided by this particular action so that it is more directly connected with the mitigation or with the design enhancements that are coming about as a result of this. So the areas on the west side of Bridgeport, there's a physical boundary there, the street. The street becomes a very identifiable, easy-to-work-with boundary. The design benefits that I think may come out of this or that are intended to come out of this don't really extend into that area. And if there is some time in the future when the city chooses to consider expanding the multifamily tax exemption, then at that point, we, as council, whoever's here, can consider that and consider at the time if there's a reasonable design feature or other attributes that make that a fair exchange, if you will. At this particular time, I don't believe that those benefits extended themselves beyond Bridgeport. We had some discussion of this in our workshop meeting, or rather work session. And this was part of that discussion at the time. So hopefully, Councilmember Figueroa, I've tried to articulate the reasoning in my mind, and I think in some others, that we had expressed in that work session.
Comments on that? Yes, that was a good clarification. So my thought is, it wouldn't hinder if it was allowed to stay the way it is or the way it's being proposed. It wouldn't really hinder anything to be that way and would potentially give us additional options in the future in case some property owner changed their mind and wanted to take out some of their buildings on their lots and build something that can take advantage of a tax abatement. And we do have an empty lot on that side, as well as some other buildings that have been there a long time that may eventually go at some point, take the multi-care office buildings that are there. office buildings that are there and so forth. So why wouldn't we keep our options open? And certainly wouldn't hurt anything by keeping them open.
Mayor Protem, did you want to respond?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. And you're exactly right, we could have the, the boundaries there. But the, the difference is if some, if a project were to come up or multiple projects were to come up with an interest in doing multifamily there and seeking a tax exemption, they would need to sit down with the city staff and council, and we would then come to an agreement as to how this would be designed. What are the features that make this worthwhile for that special case? As it is now, there has been no discussions for those properties. We know of no specifics. And the design, or the benefit, I should say, of multifamily tax exemption is treated essentially as a permitted right once we provide this, what I think is an overlay on the property, which is to say, they don't need to meet any special design criteria, they only need to meet the code. And it's, this is a special exemption, and we should, in providing that exemption, get something that is a benefit to the public in return. And that is either, in my view, a particular design that enhances our future or that takes us in a particular direction that we think is valuable to the community. At the moment, we would just be essentially providing that outright to the properties as a, as in, in a sense, as a gift without any exchange back to the community.
Okay, so, and, and I understand all that. So this is for a, the administration side, specifically maybe Matt, and that is, are we, are we able to do this for an area where we know there's going to be a development that needs this in order to it to be worked out? And then later on, say yea or nay, depending on who it is that's willing to do more or less for design efforts and all that. You know, you're familiar with spot zoning, we can't do that. Is this similar to, to that kind of law or that kind of scenario?
I, to get to the crux of the question, I don't see this as spot zoning or akin to spot zoning. The ability to zone and build to the required requirements of the zone is one separate inquiry. The other inquiry, and while they are related, is does this property qualify for a special benefit such as a tax exemption? Those are two related but distinct inquiries. Both maps that you have in front of you today, from a legal perspective, we can justify under the multifamily tax component. The question that I think where you're really looking to is essentially future-proofing it. What do we do when the next one comes in the door? And how does council wish to address that? And you are at something of a crossroads, and it's also a decision for the seven of you to discuss. Do you take the approach, look, let's wait and see and see where they're at now, or open it up, recognizing that there may still be opportunity out there? You know, and I, I don't know how to answer that for you cleanly one way or the other, except to say, it's really a question for the seven of you to evaluate and discuss.
Here's a concern I have, and that is that, I understand what you're saying, Steve, but my concern will be, if somebody comes around later on and said, you know, I really want to do this, and we say, yes, but all of a sudden, we require them to do more than what we required across the street. Again, is that, you know, giving preference to one developer over another? Again, you know, being favorable and all that, those are my concerns, you know? And, and why couldn't we just include whatever, whatever design or requirements we have on the east side have the same requirements anywhere in this whole zoning change that we're, we're talking about or this, this area that we're talking about? I'm just concerned that, that in the future, when somebody comes in, they may be treated differently than they are now. And maybe that's okay. If that's okay, and that doesn't, and this is a legal question, doesn't present a legal problem, then I guess, you know, you're right, Matt, you know, that's, that's a policy question. And that's what you're saying, correct?
Right, right, and I do see it as a policy question because you may recall in your last go-around with this, you did bake in into the code a couple of additional requirements, trying to establish the floor of the minimum square footage, tying it to the design standards, that sort of thing. But I see it as a policy question.
Okay, good enough, thank you, and thank you, Steve, I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember McCluskey, followed by Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Mayor. So from my understanding, when we did the tax abatement discussion and criteria, especially in Narrows, we had higher design standards. You know, they matched our design standards plus to, to get to get this, you know, abatement. And so when I'm looking at this parcel to the west, there's a gas station, multifamily units, some older buildings that could be repurposed, community garden area, a large open space and a lot. So why wouldn't we simplify and, you know, put some incentive on this parcel, especially since it's abiding so close to our town center? Kind of makes sense that the eventuality, town center will expand out to the south, and all this area is pretty highly commercial-driven, especially on the east side. And I see that happening on the west side and along with multifamily units, as what happened behind the old Burger King, which is now a dental office. You know, it's kind of what we're developing on the north side of 40th, would make sense to continue that on the south side because that is our center, that is our hub, that is the density that we want to focus on so that we grow the density there, not in our R2. And, and we protect the R2s and a lot of our open spaces. So we add, we're adding it here. So I'm kind of, you know, I hear what Councilmember Worthington is stating. Understand where, you know, let the developer comes, come in and we can make the wheel, you know, we can wheel and deal at the table then. But I, I would like to provide an encouragement and an incentive so that if the council believes that the same design standards we want to have north, north of 40th to go south of 40th, then I think the tax abatement would be a good incentive to align because it does come with, from what I have, and Mr. Brisky can correct me if I'm not correct, that to get the tax abatement, they have to have higher, higher standards, meet all of our standards, and there isn't any compromise to, to lower the standards like in, like in the Narrows Plaza. Isn't that correct?
With the Narrows Plaza project, before we even wanted to even approach the subject of multifamily tax abatement, we pushed them on the design requirements and pushed them to a level, you know, beyond kind of our base design requirements. And I'd say that similar, a similar thing occurred with the, the project, you know, that, that started this discussion for the Town Center South. They have exceeded certain portions of our design standards, which helped us feel comfortable with, you know, promoting the multifamily tax exemption.
Okay, and so stating that leads to Councilmember Worthington's point where we have a card, an ace in the hole to play so that we could get a little more of what we want or we can up the ante a little bit, depending on how that area will be developed out because we don't have a crystal ball yet. And so for that to come in, in the interplay, it might be nice to, to have that, you know, to hold that card for developers to come forward then because it appears that we, we gain more than, more than if it's already in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keel, followed by Councilmember Fleming.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to your last comment, Councilmember McCluskey, I think we do gain more if we hold it back. To me, it's all about negotiations and our ability to better negotiate. As a public agency, we don't have a lot of tools to negotiate, I mean, this is certainly one. And I, I don't believe having this already in place is going to necessarily attract a developer. You know, it's a lot of money to us, but if you're talking about developing stuff and the money that they have and the effort they have to invest to, to, you know, particularly nowadays, to, to buy a material and purchase land and all kinds of stuff, that money is not going to cause them to build in our spot. They will already have to have made the decision that they want to build in our spot with a, with a whole bunch of other factors that are beyond us, right? They'll make that decision. And when they do that, and then once we see what they want to, to build, then that's when staff works with them about these other little things here and there. And then we have this tool to, to incentivize them to, to do the, the other things that we want them to do. Everybody's got to meet the base zoning, right? So there's, there's no favoritism or unfairness or anything like that from fairness there. Everybody meets the base zoning. Now, if you've got a, whatever project you have, you know, how does it meet what we need and what we want as a city? And then we have this tool to help them, help us help them get there. If it's already there, you know, we have nothing to negotiate, you know? And having to get there is not going to drive them there. So I, I like the amendment, I'm going to support the amendment. I think it's very smart that we, we hold it back to see what shows up because right now, there's nothing going on the west side. I mean, all of that stuff is there, it's been there for a long time. No one's even thinking about doing anything, you know, there right now. So why would you, why would we give that ascended to something when nothing's happening? I mean, we want to have it when we know something new is coming and people are trying to build there. My statement, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, followed by Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Matt, could I tell you to put up that proposed map again? That would show Council, Mayor Protem Worthington's proposal?
Yeah, it should be coming up here. It says it's presented on my end, hopefully it's showing.
Yeah, it's showing, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I got it.
So looking at the hashed areas on the legislation that's on the table tonight, minus the proposal of the amendment, would this zone then grant any developer within that area the tax abatement? Or is the tax abatement specific to a project in that zone at the present time?
If you're within the hash, whether it's on this, or this is the, the substitute, whether it's on this or on the original, if you're within the hash and you meet our other requirements of the code, you are eligible for the MTFE in the South Town Center.
Is that an automatic?
It's, if you, if you meet the code requirements, so that would be building up to a minimum of 10 multifamily units. You meet the square footage requirements, the 24,000 square feet minimum. You meet the code requirements in terms of building to the form design, and you are located within this, and you make application to it, it is an administrative approval.
Okay.
And there may be one or other few more that I may have omitted, but generally, yes.
Okay, you know, I, I actually, when I read through this the first time, I actually came prepared tonight to, to speak against it. But, you know, looking at it again, I think it gives the city an opportunity to, again, encourage business to develop within, within our community. And I am one council member who's all about balancing business and residential and, and growth within our community. But I, I too will support the amendment that Mayor Protem Worthington has put out here for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's a very wise decision that we don't, as a council, give away all the opportunity we have. As Councilmember Keel pointed out, we have limited legislative authority. And this gives us one tool by which we can continue to tweak and fine-tune the development of our, of our town center. And when you look at future proposals as they come before the council, I think if we hold this back for now, it gives us an opportunity to provide that input and guidance versus, you know, creating the, the situation where we forego that opportunity. I know Councilmember Figaroa made a good point about balancing the east side with the west side. But again, as time changes, we all know, so do situations and so do the, the look, the feel, the desire of the community. And I think this proposal on the table allows, again, the council the opportunity to, to hold back and, and look at the developments at the time in which they come before the city and the council versus simply giving this blanket approval and then having nothing later on to help guide that process. So to Councilmember Mayor Protem Worthington's point, I think it's a very wise and very thoughtful proposal. So I fully support that, and I thank you for putting that on the table.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Worthington, I noticed you took your hand down, are you still intending to comment?
Thank you, I put my hand up to see if there was more points to clarify, but no, I have no further comments. I appreciate the opportunity, though.
Okay, are there any other comments, final go-around? Okay, not seeing any, may I ask our city clerk to do a roll call vote, please?
Is this for the amendment, Mayor?
On the amendment, that's correct.
Right. Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember Figaroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Protem Lee?
Councilmember Protem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Protem Worthington?
Mayor Protem Worthington, aye.
And Mayor Belice?
Mayor Belice, aye.
The motion passes, Mayor.
Okay, we have that, now it's on to the original amend, amendment as amended.
Councilmember Figaroa?
Councilmember, Councilmember Figaroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Protem Lee?
Councilmember Protem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCluskey?
Councilmember McCluskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Protem Worthington?
Mayor Protem Worthington, aye.
Mayor Belice?
Mayor Belice, aye.
The main motion passes, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, we're on to our next item. I would like to remind council that we do have a very heavy agenda this evening with our three, our two items for council consideration and then the items on for our study session. So I do ask that, that council attempt to be brief in their comments tonight and not to repeat themselves so that hopefully we don't get, have to get too many extensions going this evening. So our next item is a council consideration for the University Place Municipal Code, Title 23 Telecommunications Amendments. We have studied that at prior meetings, and tonight's our public is the, not the hearing, but it is our consideration. So with that, I would like to ask David Swindell to conduct the staff report for us, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight's proposed council action is to pass an ordinance of the City of University Place, amending Title 23 Telecommunications and specifically Chapter 23.45, Title and Definition Sections Only, and adding two new chapters, 23.50, Small Cell Communication Facilities, and 23.55 Eligible Facility Requests. Title 23 of the University Place Municipal Code is required to be updated to comply with the middle-class tax relief and is required to be updated to comply with the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, also known as the Spectrum Act. And that is when refers to the eligible facility requests and the FCC's report and order titled Acceleration of Broadband Deployment, Expanding the Reach and Reducing the Cost of Broadband Development by Improving Policies Regarding Public Rights of Ways and Wireless Facility Sitings. And that's short for 5G. 5G is short for that. On December 8, 2020, the City Council adopted Resolution 939, the 2021 Planning Commission Work Plan, which includes recommending recommendations for amendments to Title 23 to make the municipal code consistent with the Spectrum Act and provide regulations for the deployment of small cell wireless technology. Following the council's study session on May 3, 2021, staff added two new provisions pursuant to City Council requests to require public notice for small cell facility applications and eligible facility requests that are made for residential areas. Notice will be provided in accordance with existing notice requirements in the municipal code. The University Place Municipal Code is required to be consistent and implement the applicable federal acts and the FCC orders. The alternatives considered for were from similar code provisions within Lakewood, Puyallup, Tacoma, Silicon, and the FCC regulations themselves. The Planning Commission studied the proposed amendments to Title 23, Chapter 23.45 Macro Wireless Communication Facilities, and the new chapters 23.50 and 23.55 on January 6 and 13, on February 3, March 3, and held a public hearing on April 7, 2021, before making a unanimous recommendation to the City Council. Not here in the staff report, but we have issued CIPA threshold determination, received no comments. So once again, motion is to pass the ordinance amending Title 23, Chapter 23.45, and adding two new chapters, 23.50 and 23.55. That is my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Swindell. This is open for public comment. And again, by 5:30 this evening, we have received no public comment. And we have had no public come on to our call since we opened our meeting. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment section and ask for a motion for consideration, please.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move approval of the ordinance in front of us this evening, updating the University Place Municipal Code Title 23.
Okay, first do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, at this time, we are open for public for council questions and consideration. So does anybody have any comments or questions of Mr. Swindell? You can raise your hand if you do. Councilmember Keel, were you raising your hand or just waving?
No, I I raised my hand. I did both electronic and in the picture. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I I'm just real briefly, I it's real difficult for for, you know, when we were going through our study session and we heard all of those things that were going on around broadband, and certainly it's something that we need across this country. I mean, there's no question about that at all whatsoever in my mind. Being the technologist, I totally get the need for that and how that's really changing our lives going forward with all the different kinds of applications that are we have now and that are coming down the road. You know, but even in the light of that, you know, I I realize that the broadband folks must have a much stronger lobby right now. Because of the rules that we had and the flexibility we had as a municipality around how we wanted to move forward with certain things gave us a lot more freedom to do what was best in our minds, what we felt for our communities. Nowadays, it's not so much. Personally, in my mind, it just feels like we're being forced to do certain things, even though we may not think that's best in our in in our community, and we have no choice. And so I I'm reluctantly supporting this because of what I just said. And my hope is is that as we go forward with needed technology, that that, you know, somehow, you know, the lobbies that happens in Washington, DC will flip, you know, more toward, you know, the cities and given us the ability to 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 initiate and do the things that we think is best for our communities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. I'll try to make this quick. First off, though, Councilmember Keel, I agree very much with what you're saying, both the the words and the sentiment. Reminds me of cell towers early on, some 25 years ago or so, where we essentially are prevented or preempted from doing too much or much of anything. But one of the things we talked about doing in David in our workshop was a work session, study session, thank you, is the expansion of public notice. And is there a change in how we're doing public notice from now to what we saw in the work work session?
The what we did was we added to the application requirements for both small cell technology as well as eligible facility requests. We added a citation or a reference to an existing provision in the municipal code under Administration of Development Regulations, which is the say, the section that requires public notice to properties within 300 feet of the proposed site and two properties in debt, which is similar to that, which is required for variances or conditional use permits.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate expanding the public notice piece. I think that's a good addition. Appreciate it. Ready for it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, not seeing any. City clerk, can you please call? Roll. Councilmember Figueroa?
Councilmember Figueroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, aye.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
Mayor Belisi, aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to our next council consideration item, the University Place Veterans Memorial Plaza. And may I ask Mr. Gary Cooper to come forward with a staff report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring back to you a memorandum of understanding between the City of University Place and the University Place Veterans Plaza Group for the construction of a Veterans Memorial Plaza at Surt Park. And the it is in your packet, but I'd like to summarize the highlights of the eight-page agreement. This memorandum encapsulates an agreement for the construction of the University Place Veterans Plaza at Surt Park. The UPVP will build a public memorial that will celebrate and commemorate veterans within our community. Additionally, the construction of this plaza will provide a space to allow for a variety of public uses. The city responsibility for this would be agreed to provide no more than one-third the value of improvements up to a maximum of $40,000 in cash and in-kind services. Additionally, we added in at council's request, staff will, as part of our daily park maintenance sweeps of Surt Park, will perform the litter pickup, empty any trash cans, remove graffiti, et cetera. We'll take responsibility for that. As part of the agreement, the veterans group will provide up to $80,000 of construction costs. And additionally, for the maintenance portion of it, they will do the quarterly safety checks, inspect and replace any flags as needed, annually power wash the plaza and the any amenities that they have there. Additionally, the agreement is a requirement for the UP veterans group to maintain commercial insurance through the construction phase. Use the plaza in in recognition, they'll have priority for all scheduling of the plaza for the following holidays, Memorial Days, Veterans Day, Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. So the city is agreed to assist with this project, and that's the memorandum in a nutshell. And I imagine there's some questions, but I'm trying to keep it as brief as possible, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. This is a public council consideration item. This, there is public comment. And again, as stated previously, by 5:30 this evening, we had received no public comments via email, and there are no public that have joined our meeting this evening. So therefore, I closed that public comment section and asked for council consideration or motion for the proposal.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Keel. I move approval.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I second the motion.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we are open for council comments and questions. Councilmember McCloskey followed by Councilmember Worthing Fleming, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. My my question is, the memorandum of understanding came in an email this afternoon, and Mr. Cooper read it into our our council notations. And so since he read it into our proceedings, would that make it abutting this action that 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 we're doing? Or do we need to do another action to include the memo of understanding? Because that that would be important, I think, with to include with this council action at this time, because it dovetails into it. And so the timing should be correct where, you know, there's this resolution, we have a memo of understanding, and then that could be a package deal and move on. So I just want to know what the legal parameters and proceedings are. And I see Mr. Kizer, so I will be quiet and let him speak.
Let me give you the short, the short answer. The short answer is we're okay. The the longer answer is, if you take a look at the resolution that appeared in your packet on Friday, I believe it was Section 2 of the resolution, it authorizes the city manager, it doesn't need to negotiate an agreement, and it set a hard ceiling on that. What I can share with council is this, is that we didn't get the final, we we had the agreement in principle as of last week, but we did not have a signature-ready version of that until this morning. Once we got the green light that it met signature-ready, that's when it got pushed out to council. So the resolution that you have in your packet was built with the recognition that the agreement would be forthcoming. Certainly, the hope was by today's meeting, or by the meeting now, which it turned out. The one thing I'll just caution, and it was caught after we got all the thumbs up all around, is on the exhibit page that there is a reference, I believe it says plaza, when it should say memorial. So the idea is that it's still in substantially the form. But at the end of the day, my original comment stands, which is, we're good. It was expect, something along these lines was expected.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming followed by Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question one has been answered, but my second question, since this is a matter of public record, Mr. Cooper, the memorandum of agreement between the group and the city, this has already been approved by the group?
Correct, it has.
Okay.
Yeah, I I heard from four members today that we're all in agreement and approval of it. I don't know that the group has officially voted on it. I don't believe they have. But we did get four members that have been the key members of the group that met with council that all we had their edits and got approval from all four of them this morning.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you again for your work on this project.
Councilmember Figueroa?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, if if the care of the memorial isn't, or for whatever reason, including the the core group disappears, they move on to other things, they no longer exist, who takes care of that portion that they're saying they would take care of?
Councilmember Figueroa, one thing that I took away from the presentation we had at last council meeting was the general sense from council that they wanted the city to take responsibility for this in the long term. And when I did meet with this group after, and they said they wanted some skin in the game on this. So that's where we came up with the pressure washing annually, safety inspections, and then also responsibility for replacing any worn or tattered flags. So should the group go away, those responsibilities would then fall to the city.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from council at this time? Okay, not seeing any. May I ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Figueroa?
Councilmember Figueroa, aye.
Councilmember Keel?
Councilmember Keel, aye.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, during the last six, seven years, I've been a elected official on the University Place Veterans Plaza group, and as such, I will abstain from voting on it, although I support it. Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey?
Councilmember McCloskey, aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Councilmember Fleming, aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington?
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington enthusiastically, aye.
Mayor Belisi?
And Mayor Belisi is also an enthusiastic, yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we're on our next item, which is the city manager report. Mr. Sugg?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This earlier this evening, under consent agenda, council approved a contract with Avadex to enhance the audio visual system, audio visual systems in the council chambers so that we could conduct hybrid council meetings. The contractor's work, now that we, this is approved, is four to six weeks. So we're anticipating by early August, the contractor will be complete with their work. And the planning commission meeting in August will be used to test out the new system, do the shakeout in in using in real time using an actual meeting. If that all goes well, and assuming it does, the chamber should be ready for the council's first meeting in September. So looking forward to that, and I as I'm sure you are as well. Now, previously, at the previous meeting, I indicated that we would be giving you an update on animal licensing revenues, which is something that has council has expressed an interest in. So I'm going to, right now, I'm going to turn the rest of my report over to Public Safety Manager Jennifer Hale, so she can brief you on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and the members of council. Linda, have you got a little PowerPoint slide you could throw up for us? Thank you so much. So we we understand there's been some concerns expressed in the Finance Committee. And so we wanted to share with council a little deeper dive into the operational plan at increasing animal licensing compliance in the city. So number one, we, our plan prior to COVID, staff were working feverishly on creating an easier, more up-to-date licensing opportunities by number one, launching the city's animal licensing payment portal, implemented by the end of this summer. We had hoped to launch that prior to COVID. Obviously, COVID had an impact on many of our operations, and that was one of them that went by the wayside. But we're really looking forward to that. We think that's going to be a game changer. After that launches online, and you should see that in a newsletter soon where we let the public know, we will then include a regular link that will be embedded in a biweekly in our newsletter that we send out to license pet electronically. So we can refer our citizens to just simply click on that link every two weeks when that newsletter comes into their inboxes, their email inboxes. When that newsletter comes into their inboxes, their email inboxes and easily license their pets. We also want to have easier licensing for residents at the point of adoption with the Humane Society. We've shifted our operations, we used to collect the information via Excel spreadsheet. And track down adoptions after they had already left the Humane Society, which created a lot of staff work and we weren't very successful. So what we decided to do was allow the Humane Society to keep those point of adoption revenues. Only that first time adoption revenue and then the renewals come to the city. So then we have them for the future. So every year then we will send them that renewal paperwork and that has been a huge game changer so far. Just since we implemented that earlier this year. Fourth component, we will distribute a citywide mailer and a postcard marketing our online payment portal, asking pet portals or asking pet. Owners to license, and so this will go to every household, this will be like a super card where we. Just kind of generically invite anyone, if you have a pet to, to maybe even a QR code where they can scan that. And go ahead and license their pets. We, we hope that that will just kind of launch that and we may decide to do that every couple of years. If, if that's effective. We'll develop materials to share with multifamily to promote licensing of current non licensed animals. And help them, give them tools they need to promote easy licensing for their new tenants. They have new tenant packets that they share and we hope that that super card can be integrated into that process. We can work with them to give them some incentives to, to have their tenants and their new tenants be licensed. We'll continue to work with Pierce County Animal Control, City Code Enforcement and local veterinary clinics to increase licensing compliance in the field. Look for ways that every time that we're interfacing with people, with our community members to ensure that their pets are licensed. And provide them the opportunity to do that. And then of course, work regionally with other cities to develop a regional strategy. In our discussions over the last few weeks, we've heard some great ideas from you. As council members, we've also heard ideas from some of our regional partners that we think. Other cities that are also concerned about declining license revenues are interested in. So that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. Mr. Sugg, are you done with your city manager report?
I am, Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, we are on to council comments and report outs. I will go through the roll, roll call. Councilmember Figaroa, do you have any report outs or comments at this time? You're muted, sir.
Councilmember Figaroa does not have any comments at this time.
Councilmember Keel, do you have any report outs or comments?
Great, thank you, Mayor, just a couple of things from me tonight. First couple of things are around Pierce Transit. Some of you may know that the current CEO, Sue Dreyer, Pierce Transit is retiring. Our last, her last time with us is next month, June, I think she says she's in the wind on June 11th. Which is the day after our, our June meeting. We intend to, we're in now the process of hiring a new CEO. We've did initial round of interviews, we were down to. I think six names and we'll be doing a second round here and hopefully by next month. In the meantime, we just hired an interim CEO, Amy Cleveland, who is currently the. She's the director over administration, so she's employee, she's interim CEO. Basically just moved up a level for the few months, weeks or so that until we hired a new CEO. So that, that is happening there in, in Pierce Transit. The second thing I want to raise about Pierce Transit too as well is that. The, the board is considering. Going out for sales tax increase to help. Move forward, you know, to promote public transportation and ridership and increase hours that we have buses on the road. So we've had some workshops around what that would entail. We've got some more coming up here the next few months. I think there's a special meeting that we're going to talk about that topic. The decision has not been made, but. There's discussion. I, I, I think the people that are not so much enamored about that are, my, my take is. Is in the minority, but, but that discussion is still being had. So there's more to follow on that. That's it for my, for me tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Keel. Councilmember Proten Lee, do you have any comments or report outs at this time?
Councilmember Proten Lee, I have no comments or report this time, thank you.
Councilmember McCluskey, do you have any report outs or comments at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a PCRC meeting a week from this coming Thursday and I'm unable to attend. And I do not know who my alternate is, so I need, there you go, thank you, Mayor.
Forward, forward me the email, please.
I will certainly do that, thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Fleming, do you have any report outs or comments at this time?
Counselor, Madam Mayor, I have none, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Proten Worthington, any comments or report outs at this time?
Thank you, Mayor Belice, yes, I'll make this brief as possible. First off, thank you for the additional information, Steve and Jennifer with regards to the animal licensing as we look at that issue. It is certainly is worth our attention. We've seen drop off of about two thirds of revenue, so it's, it's significant. And since that really comes out of the Public Safety Fund, we're actually talking about revenue that's associated with police. The, it's important to be able to maintain that and get it back and make ideas that were expressed, I thought were good ideas and good steps. Recently, we received a citizen email that was interested in making sure folks knew about our fireworks prohibitions. And I assume that we're doing our regular public outreach for fireworks and helping folks realize that there are limitations. And the, there are. Quite a few fireworks that are prohibited here in University Place, folks need to be aware of that and thinking about it as well. So I assume we'll be getting the information out in the appropriate manners. And perhaps we'll even have time for that at an upcoming council meeting before the fourth. We'll see, but in any case, those are a couple of quick topics I wanted to touch on, thank you.
Thank you. I do have some report outs, but I see that Councilmember Figaroa has decided he had a report out. Councilmember Figaroa.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and it's not so much a report as it is a comment. And that is with June 30th being the end of our restraining orders from Governor Insley on everything going on. Hopefully, you know, nothing will change and, and our communities will be able to open up businesses and everybody else. So that being said, can, I would like to see some kind of a report from you and then administration. And the next round, how we're going to proceed with opening up our activities that we're accustomed to in our communities like National Night Out. October Fest and our Christmas lighting. Thank you.
You're welcome. I did have some report outs. I did attend a county council study session on the 27th of May. This was a study session that the county council invited all the mayors from Pierce County to, to discuss. How the council was prioritizing the ARPA funds, the latest relief funds. Received by the county. And it was also an opportunity for various mayors or so forth to lobby for. Some special consideration. As we are aware, most of the funding that the council has decided to spend. Has already been in the newspaper as far as, you know, business, helping business survival, economic development, doing homeless. Spending a lot of money in the, in the arena of homeless funding. They did have a portion that they had indicated was for infrastructure, basically in broadband and trying to get cable. And broadband services out to the outlying county areas. So when it came time for city council members or mayors to, to pipe up. I definitely piped up and brought them the suggestion that we had discussed at our previous retreat. And with spending our funding in the sewer extension project to aid in economic development. But I framed it in such a way as to ask that they consider a match program since we were looking to invest in improving their system. To benefit not only the city of University Place, but the coffers of the county through, you know, job creation, sales tax. New sewer users, et cetera. And it was somewhat receptive to, to the council. I know that executive Dan Meyer was very interested in that possibility. So I'm continuing to work with Councilmember Mello and the exec to see if we can't get some traction on that. So that we could potentially see some additional funding coming in the way of a match program. And get that project that was our number one economic development. Item moving forward, so, so that we can actually do something useful and be able to show how we spent our ARPA funds. To benefit our community members. Also on June 3rd, I attended the cities and towns meetings. And our county assessor, Mike Lonergan, was the keynote speaker at this meeting. And basically, they are currently going to be sending out the new values, new home values on June 25th. And so we may be hearing from a lot of our constituents because on average, the. The assessments throughout Pierce County have gone up in double digits. And so that means of course that tax, taxes will also be going up considerably. But Mr. Lonergan did indicate that. On average, when he looked at the tax assessments, 24% on average are paid to local taxing jurisdictions. For their school districts. And those are voter approved bond levies. Thirty-five and a half percent of your total tax, taxes are going to the state directly. On behalf of the McCleary Act and increases and approximately 8% goes into the county general fund. And fire districts actually average about 10.9% of, of those tax increases. And he also had some interesting statistics that the highest tax increase in, in Pierce County is going to Wilkerson. They are at 18.8% increase in tax value. I just about fell off my chair when I heard that. The city of Fife has only a 9.9% increase. They fall at the low end of the total tax assessment increase. The average was about 13 to 14%. And University Place's tax increase is going to be approximately 13.4% over last year. But again, as a reminder to citizens, the fact that tax assessments go up does not necessarily mean the local jurisdictions tax assessments. Will be going up equally, given the way that our tax, taxes are calculated. And because of the Tim Iman initiative, our tax assessments can only go up. Or what we, the city receive goes up by approximately the 1% rate. So even though our value goes up, we're not going to see a huge increase to the city of University Place. And where our funding goes to our public service, our public, our police service. Other than that. That was it for the cities and towns meetings, so it's all the report out I have at this time. I see that Councilmember Fleming did raise his hand. Did you have a report out that you wanted to make?
Madam Mayor, not, not so much a report out, but just a comment on your remarks you just made with regards to the tax statements coming out. We as a city may want to do, consider, I should say, a preemptive information. Or info commercial or whatever we want to call it to our citizens, just to let them know that. This is how those taxes are truly broken down. I recall last year, maybe the year before, we did an education with, with the citizens of. How is your tax dollars collected or spent? We may want to refresh that and send it back out ahead of these tax statements. So we, our citizens have an understanding of what they're looking at when they get it.
Yep, actually, the city of University Place places per cent tax increases actually. Our tax rate is going to go down as a result of the way the calculations are done, so.
We should point that out to them.
Yep. Okay. With that, I am going to close the city manager and council comments and move on to our study session. Again, I want to thank council for their brief comments at this last section and want to remind them, remind you that we do have. Three other items that are going to take up the rest of our evening. So our next item is the GGLO update on Homestead Park, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council again. Again, Gary Cooper with the City of University Place Parks Department. Tonight, I'm joined by Philip Decker and Mark Sendell of GGLO. For a presentation of their findings from the public outreach efforts and ultimately recommendations for the updating of Homestead Park. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Decker and Mr. Sendell.
Excellent, thank you, Gary. I think for me to, I need the ability to share my screen right now. It says only the presenters can share, so I think there's just a quick toggle on that real quick.
Phil, if we're not sure how to make that happen, so can we share for you?
Sure, yeah, we can make that work.
All right, perfect, I'm going to kick things off and so we'll do most of this, so Mayor, Council, thank you. We're happy to be here this evening to talk Homestead Park. Go ahead and go to the next slide. All right, so we're just going to go over a process and timeline briefly to remind everyone where we came from, where we are and where we're going. And then Phil's going to give an update on the public outreach, including some survey findings and a digital workshop that we do with the public. We'll talk a little bit about some recommendations and then very importantly, we'll talk about next steps and fit some time for Q and A. Next slide. So the process, we started a while ago developing a preliminary park program and framework. Based on the 2020 pros plan and council input, input from you and input from the Parks Commission, that's complete. Then we solicited input from the public, which we'll share tonight, which was completed. And then we'll also share some recommendations we're developing for input. Hopefully, we're working towards council approval and then we want to get into schematic design. Based on the approved master plan and get moving so that we can meet some of the funding and source deadlines. We get Homestead Park designed and now to bid and built for the public to enjoy. Next slides. So just want to remind everyone the goals that we've developed over time that are the touchstone for everything we're doing. We want to stimulate economic development. We want to refine Homestead Park to be cohesive with the overall town center, including of course, City Hall and Lot 1. We want to activate Homestead Park as year round community event space. Update the park to meet current community needs, safety, sustainability and design standards. And that's something we dove into in the public outreach questions. Apply SEPTED or Crime Prevention through environmental design standards for safe and secure use of Homestead Park in the future. And of course, protect and enhance the historical character of Homestead Park, including the beautiful existing trees. Next slide. Next slide. The timeline, we had a presentation to you at the council retreat and got some good feedback. We had Parks Advisory Commission meetings, those are complete. We had joint commissions meeting for input, that was complete, public outreach was complete. And then we also went one last time to Parks Advisory Commission for this phase, which was completed. And we did, even though they didn't need the vote, there was unanimous support to continue on this schematic design from them. Next slide. And then we are really wrapping up the master plan and approvals. And some of the work that's being wrapped up right now includes the site survey and a detailed arborist report so that we can use that as we get into the design. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil.
Perfect. Thank you, Mark. Next slide, please. So we're going to spend the next few minutes going through the public outreach section. We're first going to start to go through the public survey and then the public workshop that we had. So we're going to quickly go through some of the results. So the first question that we had in the public survey is, you know, what, how often do you visit the park currently? It was pretty dramatic that we saw, this was pretty eye-opening, that we did see this a pretty underutilized park. 62% of the people said they visit the park less than once a month. That was, that was pretty shocking to to us to see, knowing that it's proximity to the downtown core and and it's just its location itself was pretty, pretty, pretty eye-opening. Next slide, please. What do you like most about Homestead Park? It was very evident, this is the top four answers that we received. Right off the bat, you could see overwhelmingly the natural character of the park, the forest, the trees, rhododendron gardens, green space. Those are all descriptive words that people used. The walking trails were sort of, there was a interesting aspect that came up several times. There was a about the more of the restorative qualities that the park provided. More about how it was refreshing and quiet and secluded, the atmosphere. And then the playground area, they said they, a lot of people mentioned the space for kids. Next slide, please. What do you like least about Homestead Park? Overwhelmingly, it was safety. There is a dramatic, you know, note indication that the public does not feel safe in this park. A lot of comments, as you can see here, about it being a lack of sightlines, dark shaded, kind of creepy overgrown trees, hidden access, feels enclosed. The other was, they felt like it, the size and the improvements, not enough space, needs improvement. And then there was, I should note, there was a handful of people, it does drop off quite a bit, but they said it's perfect. You know, leave it the way it is, it doesn't need anything. And then, as you see, it kind of drops off of parking, traffic noise, lack of restrooms. So those were the comments there. Next slide, please. Number four, what do you wish was more of at Homestead Park? And using kind of a word cloud or Wordle, you could see what are the most common items that popped up. So, you know, playground, kids, benches, seating opportunities, open space, bigger playground, trails, lighting. And I should note, there was a couple of people, nine people there that said nothing. So there, there is a smaller contingency, though, that does feel that, you know, the park should be left alone. And just, you know, just to note that. Next slide, please. When considering parks and facilities in the community, you know, what do you value the most? So right off the bat was the strolling paths, native sustainable landscapes. Community event space came to the forefront, passive open space. Those were, you know, the the top four, though, and then dropping off was more of art, environmental art. So, next slide, please. So what are your priorities for this park? So they had the opportunity to select three. You know, 57, 57% of the people that took the survey picked walking trails, then park restrooms came in second. Woodland garden, rhododendron species garden, and you see the top seven there. Next slide, please. There was an opportunity in that question also to provide a other, other comments. And so we did see within those comments, looking at it, farmers market and pavilion community space did come up five different times. And then there was two comments about indicating nothing. So just something to note there. Okay, next slide, please. What types of special events would you like to see at the park? Overwhelmingly, people picked the farmer's market and live music. And then there was the holiday lighting and then kind of dropped off from there, but those are the top three. And again, there was a couple of, you know, 11 comments about, you know, that they kind of feel like the the park should be left alone. So, next slide, please. Going back to the first question, it was interesting. We said, you know, it feels like it's, it was overwhelmingly underutilized park. People said they visit it less than once a month. So, next slide, please. When we kind of rolled through all these questions and we kind of started to give people a flavor of what are the opportunities for this park? And then we asked the question again at the very end of the survey, is how often do you plan to visit the park after it's renovated? It's kind of a tricky question because, you know, you don't know exactly what's in it, but you're starting to get it. You could start to see already, this is pretty evident, that people feel that if it's, it needs improvement. They want to see improvement there and they're willing to 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 visit the park more often. So it dramatically changed from that less than once a month to a few times a month, about once a week to once a month. So it it did see that this is an indicator that the the public does see the value of providing some improvements for this park and they will use it. Next slide, please. We had a section where it was, please share any other comments you have. And then there is from the the top six categories that we were able to go through. There's a lot of comments, 188 people did take the survey, which we see as a, is a really good response from the citizens. But overwhelmingly, the the top two kind of came out where the repeated items were natural forest, forest areas, the trees, the rhododendrons, the wooded green space, flowers. And then there was the second one, which was right behind it, which was the need for improvements and events. So it's it's kind of interesting. You see, you see that kind of balance between the two. And I think that is really the the key within it is, is how do you provide both of those? There was a lot of comments about, you know, farmers market just coming to the forefront over and over again. And again, there, and third is, there was a lot of people that commented about the, the kind of the tranquility and the atmosphere and about, you know, more of the emotional response of what that park provides. So that's really interesting. And again, we brought it up before, safety came up. But you can kind of see that's the top three, those are the ones that came to the forefront. Next slide, please. So that was the survey. We also provided a workshop opportunity, which we did virtually. So that was, you know, something new for us. It's, you know, COVID provides, you know, try to be flexible and do things. So what we did was, we had an open workshop where people were, could join virtually and we had breakout sessions. We, we only had eight citizens, so we are kind of, you know, and if we were to do one in person, we would probably think that would, that number would almost be doubled in that 12 to 15 range. So we did have eight citizens, two council members, two people from the Parks Advisory Commission and five city staff. So what we did is we broke out into into four different groups and we talked about, we had different images. These are the the four different groups that we did break out into, which was the event space, safety, community spaces and components. So within those, these are the items in every single category that stood out from people's comments. Under event space was the promenade for events, open, flexible lawn, and then the stage. In safety, overhead pedestrian path lighting, emergency call stations, low pedestrian path lighting, so on and so forth. Community spaces, I should also comment too, these are the images that the individuals selected. So they're able to drag dots to the images that they wanted from a variety of images. And these are the ones from those categories that were the most selected as as their favorite. So under community spaces, natural playground, discovery trails and elements, rhododendron and woodland garden. And then under components, the discovery trails, natural play. So it's again, talking about all that, the character that you kind of saw from the results in the survey. Next slide, please. So here's kind of just the background, overall synopsis, I guess, of the online survey. Again, I mentioned 188 people, but it was overwhelmingly, people valued the natural forest, rhododendrons and green space of of the park. Safety is a concern. There needs improvement. You know, playground, restrooms came up quite a, quite a bit, a larger playground. Desire for events, again, farmer's market, some live music, holiday lighting came up numerous times. So those are the the top items that came out of the survey. Out of the public workshop, the promenade for events, restrooms, open lawn, natural playground, the value for the woodland woodland garden and rhododendrons again. So it was very evident from the two. And again, safety is a concern. Next slide, please. So looking at our recommendations, these are are based on comments from the city council from when we met back in January, the Parks Commission, the various other commissions that we've met with, and then the citizens themselves from not only the the survey, but the workshop itself. We see overwhelmingly, people really value the existing landscape that they're, that's there in the character. So it's to protect the natural setting of the park, minimize removal of the existing trees to the greatest extent of possible. But it's interesting because there's also a desire to have open space and events there, too. So that's really about kind of that that balance between it. Retain and transplant as much of the existing rhododendrons to this park or other parks. Add restrooms to support the, to the use of the park and events. Enhance the safety by establishing clear sightlines, expanding walkways and adding lighting. That was very clear through the the survey and the public process that safety is a concern and it needs to be addressed. Next slide, please. So this was the park concept that we were sharing back in January. You know, the, the, all that information that we got out of the prose plan, the information that we received from you, the council itself and the Parks Commission, you know, helped kind of help establish this plan. You know, I know you've seen this, so I'm going to quickly just hit on a few key points and then we'll move on. But again, it had this north-south connection, had clear entries. And then the core of the space was already established where we had fewer trees on site. So and that comprised of the event space, the more open lawn and play space in the center and the, in the core of the park itself. And then surrounding the park, or I'm sorry, somewhere surrounding the core where you'd have those event spaces is the community spaces and discovery trails. And that would really kind of keep the the character of the park itself. So what was really interesting is all that knowledge that we were able to gain from, you know, working with the various organizations and groups is, is that the the plan is is very much intact. It's really just the information we received from the community really supported kind of the overall concept that was established with a few tweaks from here on on forward. Next slide, please. This gives you a little bit of the idea and the flavor of what that central area could look like as it as it moves forward, as a, you know, open, flexible area that you can support various activities of farmer's markets and smaller groups and gatherings. Next slide, please.
All right, let's get into what's next. And one thing I'll note on the past slide is what, one of the reasons we have that arborist report is that there's a natural opening in the trees already in the park, and you're probably familiar with that. So we're trying to make sure that that event area that Phil talked about, that the community wants, is positioned mostly in that open space, we can limit the removal of trees. So cost estimate, we've updated to reflect the recommendations that Phil mentioned, including the addition of a restroom. As you all are keenly aware of, construction escalation has been more than normal. So we incorporated that from the last time we did this for the current year and for the next year, assuming that this will get us to 2022. So this gives you an update, we're looking all in at just over 3 million bucks for the conceptual estimate, including the cost of construction, some contingencies, sales tax, contractor markup, design and engineering fees, and again, that escalation. Next slide, we can get into it in Q and A, we have quite a bit of backup. And Phil has dove into this quite a bit and comparing it to projects we've done recently. So we can come back to this in Q and A, we won't bore you at the moment with this. Next slide. So what's next? Schematic design, we'd like to start with your eventual approval here sometime soon, in the next few weeks, and really spend June and July doing that, getting this program that we've got set really developed and dialed in with consultants. Then we get in consultants for lighting and mechanical, civil, structural. Then we get into design development for July and August. And at that point, we're going to come back to you in August for review and show you a real layout of the elements, not just diagram, which is essentially what you've seen to date. Then we're going to get into construction documents, August and September, bidding and negotiation in October. And hopefully, construction starts in October. And the key important part is to get all this going so that construction can be complete in the spring of 2022, March, and get this thing open and get all the funding deadlines for that person. I see a question, so I will pause.
Okay, Councilmember Fleming, you had your hand up, was that from, do you have a question regarding this presentation?
I do. So thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I found that, to say the least, quite inspiring and excited to see this come to fruition. So trying to figure out how to get from point A to point B or Z, whatever we want to call it, is going to be the real catch. But I I appreciate all that you you have put into this to make it happen. I do have a couple of questions. And that is, you know, in the beginning, when this was put together, how did you notice to the public of the survey and in the public hearings?
There's various platforms in which the city uses. There is emails, there is the the TV, there is a various, we utilized, I'm not sure if Linda's on, Gary can speak to it, but there's, I think, five or six different platforms, all this social media of Twitter and various Facebook pages. And that, so there's, there are a whole handful of different opportunities in which they were able to send this out.
Okay. And based on your past experiences working with cities and projects, what's a normal expected cohort or N number that you work with when doing these surveys in a city of our size?
I would say it's, it's pretty close to what we've gotten, or even a little less. I would say for a city of your size, given the circumstances, we were very happy with the amount of input that we received.
Okay. No, I ask that because if you look at that N number, that represents roughly about 0.6% of our population. So I don't know what I would consider a quote, a successful number or not a successful number when we're making a decision of this significance for what I consider one of our prized parks in the city. So I I don't know what, what to make of the conclusions you came up with based on that cohort or that N number.
Yeah, Councilmember, we, we had, what was it, Phil, 188 survey respondents? So we were thinking that anything north of 100 for the city of your size for this park would be successful. So we were, I think we're doing pretty well.
Okay, great, thank you. And then lastly, in in your initial proposals, will, one of the comments I heard was you'd look at opening up that space so it feels a little bit more open than what it currently is. Would that include removing those trees along the Bridgeport Way? Or would those be left and then you open up the interior? Or what, what are you visualizing there?
Yeah, Councilmember, I think it's more the latter, so it would be the interior. The idea is to put that event space in the center where there's that natural opening. Invariably, some trees will have to be removed, but to leave the trees along the edges and have that walkway or promenade, as Phil was calling it, come through well-lit to this nice, open visual space and let the trees be in the perimeter. But anyone moving through the park or attending an event in the park feels nestled in the trees, but they also feel like they can see it's well. feel like they can see it's well lit. There's a clear accessible path through there and a nice opening. But I don't think there's a plan to do much removal around Bridgeport along Bridgeport Way unless something comes back from the arborist report that says that there's some unhealthy trees or hazard trees that need to be removed.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Again, thank you for a great report. I appreciate that.
And I just wanted to note, Councilmember, there's also that's during this process right now, as we mentioned, there is the currently the tree survey that's being conducted to actually identify the location of each of these trees and the size. But the arborist report that's currently being conducted is where we gather a lot of that information about the health and quality and the vitality of each of these trees and to make sure that there's no, you know, it it starts to inform us on on the location. And if there is any hazard trees in that particular park.
Okay, you know, I wish I could say I have a lot of faith and confidence in arborists. But my experience in the past has been if we want a true remove, they can find a way to find a disease in it. So I just look at those type of reports with quite a John DeSai, to be honest with you.
Normally true, and we hear you. Therefore, we've got Jim Barbrena, who we've worked with for 20 years, who is exceptional, and this is not the case with him. But you're right, Councilmember, that's usually the case. We're glad to have Jim on this one. And I think this is actually a will be a real legitimate report.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Councilmember McCloskey, followed by Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did a Councilmember Fleming's comments about how hard you guys worked and the quality of design standards that that you have come forward and looking how the functional use, the organic flow that people would use this park, park at. And I also did a Councilmember's ditto, Councilmembers Fleming's comment in regards to arborists, to protecting of the of the trees. And in your budget, you have forty trees budgeted. And so it could be the arborist discovers any diseased trees that need to be removed, that will probably uptick that number, I presume, is probably the the forty trees to create the design as we see it designed out and then additional trees on top of that, correct?
Correct. That's our best guess at the moment. Once we get that report, we'll be able to really count trees and understand exactly. And I just want to reassure you that trees will only come out if there's a reason, you know, if there's another way to do things or we can shift the plan, to limit the removal of trees, we will. So trees will only come out to the extent necessary to meet the desires of the community and council of the design and for any hazard trees. So we're going to be very careful about tree removal.
Okay, thank you. And then also in your your comment survey, there was a lot of comments in regards to the the roadies and the wooded areas. And so I feel that you're really looking at the wooded areas and protecting that. But I didn't really hear a lot about the rhododendrons, because part of the natural environment and the beauty of that part is when in May, when it's in bloom, and then there's subsequent bloomings, which creates beautiful color and and also the historical value of the roadies that that are there. Because there's a thousand plants that had been placed there donated by the Peninsula Road Adventures Society. And and you know, you know, the history there and that, you know, the prior council made a promise that, you know, we're a new council, you know, new day, new new time. So we do, I feel it does need to evolve to be to become more more useful and to attract more and more people in regards to growing the playground and and also some of the promenades and the farmer's market component. You match all those in such a tiny space is going to be really difficult. And so but I do want to know where the roadies are in in the plan that you have outlined, outlined. There's community space, there's different gateways, discovery trails. So where would the rhododendrons be?
So there's a few more slides coming up in the rest of the presentation. And one of the things that we'll hit on is in the schematic design portion, this next phase that starts in June and July is to identify those locations and actually going out on site with Dr. Becker, who was instrumental in locating a lot of these rhododendrons. So that phase of identifying, you know, which ones are, you know, key valuable, which ones are the ones you need to preserve, which ones can be relocated, and identifying the locations of those two and walking the site with Dr. Becker. So that's really in the next phase. And you'll see the outline of of schematic design. That's when that takes place.
And I'll also add, Councilmember, also add that in addition to walking aside with Dr. Becker and preserving rhododendrons, we're actually going to bring in some new rhododendrons. You probably saw in the estimate, there's some additional planting with native woodland plants and some nice low growing rhododendrons to extend the bloom season. As you probably know, there's a beautiful spectrum of rhododendrons from early blooming Cornell pink, you may have found you laid them before the leaves come out, teddy bear and others. So we do respect and understand the value of the rhododendrons. And we also want to perpetuate that for the future with some new ones as well.
Okay, and and in once you do design it out and Dr. Becker goes and and make his recommendations, there there is an extension that is a budding this park called the Wild Side. And so if if there is any way to, because eventually, you know, that that is the addition to Homestead Park as well. It's always been thought of as that way. It's not a forgotten little lump of land and to to make it more accessible and also, you know, to create, to save some of the rhododendrons along that to be a rhododendron pathway, to save some of the historical perspectives and and maintain the the status of the rhododendron gardens at at Homestead Park. And also in your plan, you're going to design out several different gateway signs. And I'm hoping that that gateway that is on Bridgeport is still going to exist and stand. Now, that's pretty much iconic to Homestead Park. And when you drive by, you look at it, and that's Homestead Park. It's kind of identify it with that. And it's a very zen-like restorative piece. I think it would complement some of our citizens' comments to keep the restorative and natural aspects of our park. So I'm assuming that was, I hope.
That's the plan, and that's great feedback.
All righty. Thank you. That's all my comments thus far. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belice. And gentlemen, thank you for your help as well. So Mark and Philip, good job in getting us started and considering a lot of different comments. I had a few questions. Some are just factual issues I wanted to get straight in my head and some are other issues as well. Just to begin with, how how big is the site approximately in acres? Is that three acres or acres?
Five point five, I believe.
Five point five? Okay, thank you. And on the northern edge of the park, we on the depictions there, we have something referred to as the extension of Marketplace. That's basically a street extension. And whether that's a private or public street, I guess it's meant to be representative. But did you have you, I'm assuming you had some direction at the start of the project that said, please assume this street is here. Is that kind of how it went or?
Are you referring to the connection up to the on the north side in the middle where the promenade connects?
Yeah. And then also running, connecting from the extension of Marketplace down to Jexler is another proposed or supposed street. And I think I've seen some indication they might be parking on that on some days. That kind of the thoughts there as well?
Yes, the ultimate goal is to make sure that Homestead Park can actually have a connection beyond its boundaries and serve a kind of a greater need than just what's currently as as it is, that it can facilitate other activities that are happening beyond its boundaries. And so it's
In coordination with Lot One, of course, and the planned access improvements with Lot One, to the extent that we can know, but we did some planning with the two of those together to try to get them to sync up nicely.
Yeah, yes, exactly. But certainly, there's a long term expectation that there's a, excuse me, visual connection across Lot One to Homestead, as you've, as you've depicted and as this helps support as well. So tying it back to Market Square area, which is great. Okay, thank you. Wanted to mention one thing before I get into some other stuff. We've got a budget number out there. And, you know, it's in the range of, was it three point two million? Right about there. And again, that's conceptual, just for the, I want to be clear that to the public in general that are watching, we have a variety of of limitations on our funds and certain money can only be used in certain ways, which is in the long run a good thing. But whatever dollars go into such a project, they're not coming from the operating expenses or dollars for the city. They're not general fund dollars. They are specific through grants or they're through other specific revenues that are meant for park development and future use. And it's not something that comes out of the general fund and more particularly does not come out of the property taxes that are dedicated to public safety. These are different dollars. And we're not allowed to mix such things. So having clarified that and at least tried to, some of my interests are right there in terms of maintaining the the natural environment sorts that we have there with our trees and with the roadies. And while the park doesn't get perhaps a lot of users, which I suspect is true for a variety of reasons, people are able to drive by the park in May and and depending upon the blooming seasons being extended maybe longer and enjoy the park just by passing in by. And it's a it is spectacular when when the roadies are in bloom and special then. Not something you need to be inside of. I've understood a number of the comments and experienced that myself. I think one hundred and eighty eight some respondents is reasonably good survey. As far as frequency goes, I'm not exactly sure on some of the things that we have pulled out of that, though. And I'll just want to, this will become, this comment is about to be of no surprise from any of my colleagues, which is, it's calling for restrooms. And why? Why do we need to have restrooms for a park that is projected to be underused at this point? And if we go to question number three in your survey, where we had people explaining what's lacking, at the bottom of the list was restrooms were lacking. And out of those hundred and eighty eight respondents, how many listed that according to how you reported the survey? The total is seven people. Less than four percent said restrooms are lacking. Now elsewhere in the survey, when we're talking about what improvements might we bring, which is a little more futuristic view, it's then restrooms move up to the top of the list, or not to the top, but nearer the top than the bottom run. So I in a lot of years that I've enjoyed in public service, restrooms are a common request. And I see them in the public base, public service years, often you'll find a neighborhood park and people want restrooms in their neighborhood park that is a quarter of an acre and comprises primarily a monkey bar or something similar. And that's just not necessarily what the purpose of a neighborhood park is. It's and here I kind of question, what is the purpose to when it comes to restrooms? If it's about special events, then something like Santa cans are a bit more specific to the need. And there may be some way to pre prep or prepare Santa can use that makes it a bit more easy to maintain and also easier to use. And while they are significantly cheaper than the maintenance cost associated with a restroom, and while you have no capital cost, such as a hundred and eighty thousand dollars proposed there, which, by the way, I may be a challenge to meet in any environment, but who knows the future? It isn't about the dollars. It's more about, it's more about safety issues and what gets used. And if we have to make choices of how we spend our money, which we always do, do we put it in into this area? So, yeah, I always end up having questions about park restrooms. I don't really want to be labeled as the park restroom guy. But I guess I'll live to, I'll be consistent in my questions about such things. I think the the rest of the project looks good. I appreciate your budget projections. And I thought she built contingencies that made, you know, who knows the future, but they made some sense for us. And adjusting the cost from 2022, expectations is challenging, but I thought she made a reasonable step at that and a wise thing to do. Yeah, I wish we had more participation in the in the project in our virtual meeting, but so be it. So thank you. You know, my, where I'm at with restrooms, I would like to see a design that offered a the ability to use Santa cans in a more reasonable way, because frankly, they have less crime associated with them. They are, they don't represent the maintenance cost and people do what they need to do and move on. And restrooms in today's world is really a magnet for folks that have no homes. And as sad as that is, is that who we're building these for, because that's who will use them. So okay, I'll let others talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Stan Fleming, and I understand, gentlemen, you still have some some of your presentation yet to do. Is that correct?
Yeah, but it's just a few minutes. It's about next steps and design fees and just asking for your potential near future approval of those. But I think we should keep going with the questions. We can do that.
Okay, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a real quick one during the conversation, this kind of popped into my head. I didn't hear in your presentation, either from Mark or Philip, in the park, I just learned this very recently, there are some memorials there and dedication or or papers. What happens to those with this plan? Do they, did all those disappear? Or do we move them to someplace else? Or where is that in your plan?
You know, go ahead, Phil.
Oh, I was gonna say, so in the the next phase where we actually go out on site and identify all the locations for these particular rhododendrons, that'll give us the particular because we just had the site survey done to identify the location of the trees. The next phase is to identify the shrubs, the understory, all those rhododendrons, and to walk it with Dr. Becker. So that's when we'll start to gather all that information of specific locations. The other thing is, as we're looking at this, we see sightlines and safety as a big concern. And there are a lot of people talked about through conversations through with other commissions is the police are are finding this particular park difficult to patrol. And so sightlines are one of the things that we're going to look at in this next phase with identifying the shrub locations. So one of the things that is potential is to relocate them on site or relocate them into another park itself. So there's a variety of different options for us. But one, the first thing we need to do is to identify the locations of these.
Yeah, Phil, some of these, some of these memorials or dedications may not be plants. They may be pavers. I don't know. I haven't been there to look at them. I've just been given kind of a heads up on that. So as you identify that stuff is in your plan, will will there be a plan to relocate those? I'd like to think you would.
Absolutely.
Yes, any any memorial plants, pavers, benches will be treated with the appropriate level of sensitivity discussed and anything we do with those will be only what's acceptable to be done with them. We totally understand that. We all have the same thing. I know I have my mom's name on a park in La Nieta Beach Park, and I wouldn't want to have that just be gone the next time I go see it. So yes, we understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Okay, thank you. And Council, Mayor Protem Worthington is going to find this really difficult to believe. But as far as the restrooms go, at this point in time for Homestead Park, I concur, I think, but a having a a Santa can, a family friendly Santa can, so we can identify the actual use and maybe future need if if so. But rather than putting the all the money into a restaurant, a restroom, a restaurant would be good there, huh? In that little five point five acre park, we can stick a restaurant right in there. But I I think we need to figure out the, once it's all designed out, the actual use and need. And if so, you know, make you know, make, make a decision at that point in time. But a family friendly one, a wheelchair friendly one. Clean sanitized Santa can. I will go for that. The other, I was looking at your cross sections. And I know you haven't got to that. And so when you do probably speak about the cross sections and, and the people that are mobility challenged and how, how that they would also be able to use the park and take advantage of our, our events. Cause you know, you do have some gradations in there. It doesn't seem to be really significant until you get all the way to Drexler Drive. So just, just kind of some of the thoughts on that. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think at this point you can continue on with your, your presentation.
All right, why don't we bring back up the PDF for the presentation? Okay, next slide. So a couple of things, schematic design, what are we doing with schematic design? A bunch of stuff. I'll just, I'll let you read this, but a couple of highlighted items, we'll attend and present the Homestead Park preferred plan to the Park Commission. We'll have the site visit and coordinate, as Bill said, with Dr. Becker to locate and identify significant important rhododendrons and other vegetation and memorial items. We'll review the arborist report and have a site visit and tree analysis and, and really dig into that and truly noted on the the, the comments about arborists and arborist reports from the council. And then basically we're going to be taking the program and the work to date and really applying it, the general layout and the program elements to size and scale, calibrate with tree locations, grades and all those things and get a plan pre-dowled in. So we'll have updated site sections and elevations with those grades. We'll have a preliminary event structure design. We'll have a preliminary plant list and materials palette, including the new rhododendrons. Preliminary low impact development strategies. We want to make sure these trees are healthy. And then we're dealing with stormwater responsibly. And then we'll have grading and drainage, lighting and electrical utility design and geotechnics report and maybe spell check too. Sorry, some spelling errors on this. Next slide please. And then for design development, we're getting really into the next level of details, getting ready for bidding documents. The first major step towards that, we will again present to the Parks Commission. We'll have ongoing coordination with the engineering teams, get things documented, developed, including utilities. It will have preliminary details on the deliverables. We'll have a refined lighting and electrical design and lighting plan. We'll find grades and drainage as well as other things that are listed as well. About six weeks, which is a little fast, but I think we'll, we'll be able to meet that schedule. Next slide. And then this really gets us ready for bidding. So the construction documents, we're gonna again, go back to the Parks Commission and, and we'll also come to you all at the end of the schematic design phase, if I didn't mention that. And we will calibrate this for any of the details regarding maintenance and make sure that the assemblies and the details are done correctly and that the fittings are engineered for the structural engineer and also any permit requirements regarding structures will be submit, submitted and finalized here. So the deliverables, there'll be a permit set, the final site plan set, site construction details, final structure design, final planting design and plant schedule palette and the irrigation design, final layout of materials. And then of course, the utilities and everything will be fine grained down to the specifications. Next slide. So to do that, basically just to recap, so the next phase is we're calling really getting us to bid documents, schematic design, design development and construction documents over a period of about 20 weeks, total design fees for us and Cetera Engineering, our civil engineer rushing our MPA, so mechanical, electrical plumbing engineer and our structural engineer are $268,340, including reimbursable expenses. Next slide. So we saw the plan. Let's go to the next slide. I think Councilmember was asking about the elevations or sections. One more slide. Actually, sorry, I think it was back about four.
No, the, the, there'll be some sections after this. I
Oh, after this, okay.
Just in case.
Here we go.
So there's this particular slide and then we have the other, the next slide is an enlargement of kind of the, the core section of the slide. So.
Yeah, so let's jump in there. So there is some undulation and some paths. We're gonna work hard to make all those less than 5% so that they're accessible. One of the reasons we have this promenade is to have a well lit, accessible, wide, firm surface that goes through the park to the major event area. So there should be that promenade or central walkway to the central meadow and the event area should be a very easy, navigable, hard, flat, flush surface for anyone to use really throughout the seasons. And then the other pathways and elements will all be accessible through one meandering winding paths. And we'll be paying close attention to slopes, materials that rise and run of those elements.
And I think one council member had a, a comment regarding the slope to the east. If, if you can back up one slide. There is a significant grade change that does happen as you go out to Dexler Drive and that will be evaluated to, to meet that 5% to get down to have that accessible down to that portion of the site.
And that concludes the remainder of the presentation.
Well, I want to thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. I did attend your virtual meeting with the public and it's nice to see that we actually had eight people there. I was beginning to think when we had our breakout sessions that it was only staff and Councilmember Protem Lee and myself and some of our Parks Commissioners. So the discussion was really interesting being that it was virtual. Because I'm used to going up and putting dots on things and you guys handled the discussion in the groups really well. And allowed the participants that were in these sessions to really express their point of view. And I think you captured their, their ideas and, and their point of view quite effectively. I can tell you as a daily park user now that I have a dog, I did not understand what, what people's concept of safety was until I started walking this park on a daily basis. While I enjoy the solitude of the park and I enjoy the greenery, I can understand that there are a lot of areas in that park because of the roadies and undergrowth and the tree canopy that are rather dark. And it, it does become uncomfortable for some individuals in our community. And it, and you're right, there is no, no ability to see from one end of the park to the other. So the police have an equally difficult time seeing what transpires in the middle of this park. So I'm looking forward to opening up that visibility and, and making it feel safer for the community. I do know there are quite a few people that utilize that park on a daily basis. I don't know if they're strictly residents from the immediate locality from all the apartments. But there are families out there with their, with their small children utilizing the play area and throwing balls and in the open meadow space. So we do need to keep that in mind. And because they are families with small children, restrooms are important to that demographic. As well as seniors that have a tough time walking great distances. You know, restrooms become a vital, a vital component. So whatever we come up with, whether it be a family friendly Santa can situation or a hard structure restroom. Restrooms are going to be needed. And if this does turn into a, an event space where we bring the community by to introduce them on a more regular basis to this, this jewel of a, of a park. Restrooms will become even more needed because I'm sure Applebee's does not want people just coming in to utilize their restroom space. Nor does, nor would any of the other businesses that have the potential to be located on lot one would, would want to open up for those, those types of activities without customers purchasing from them. So we do need to keep that in mind as we go through. The memorial plaques, every time I walk through the Rhododendron Garden and I look at the memorial plaques. I am amazed at how many people are memorialized there that had a significant, played a significant part in the creation of university place and were vital community members. So I do think we, we need to in some way in this design remember those individuals and, and find a way to incorporate that in as part of the history of this park. It's always a nice calming thing to go through and go, oh gosh, I remember her and oh, I remember him. And I didn't realize so and so has a plaque there for their father or their aunt. You know, and remember these individuals. So I look forward to the, to seeing what that roadie inventory looks like because I know that there's a university place, a few university place roadies in there. And I have yet after the last month been able to locate those unique roadies. And I do think it, it'll be fun, wonderful. Once we can clean that space up and really make these things shine as they move forward. As we move forward with this. So I'm looking forward to it. Councilmember Keel, you had your hand up and then Mr. Cooper, you had some final comments?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I wanted to hear everything before I commented and, and I, I really like your report. I, I thank you. I think it was very well thought out and I did want to hear the whole thing before I commented to make sure that I was hearing things right. And I, and I just want to say that I, I do appreciate the work that you've done. I, I listened tentatively to my colleagues' questions, all of them. And I think that your responses, at least in my mind, were, were very good and adequate and, and above adequate as far as responding to their questions. I do agree with Councilman Worthington's assessment of, of not building a, a monumental, a monumental restroom there for all the reasons that he, that he raised. You know, if you're at the park and doing things, I mean, I, I think a Santa can does work. I mean, you, you get there, you do your business and you get out of there. You're not, you know, this, you're not going there to go to the bathroom, you know, like this monument thing. And so, so I, I, at least in my mind, you know, as long as they're level and, and accessible and you've got the family friendly Santa cans as Councilman McCloskey talked about, you know, you can get kids in and out of there and maybe some diaper changing kind of things and, and some, some accessible kinds of things. I mean, Santa can has all those things. I, I think that really fits the bill and also brings down the bill, you know, so to speak. You know, being, being in sensitive to, to the memorial things that are there. I think your response was, was, was spot on to all that stuff. So I, I'm just really excited, you know, as one that's been in this community for, for a very long time. Over three decades, I, I, I can tell you that you know, the, 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 coming this, to this park being, you know, the park that we really want to be, I'm, I'm excited about the possibility. And, and I'm sensitive to, to all the things that surround it. But I feel that you guys are addressing those sensitivities well. And, and I like the drawing and I'm just, I'm just excited about the, the possibilities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the Park Director, I feel like I'm the one on the pointy end of the spear. Every time it comes up, the restroom discussion and I, I fully knew what some of the council would, their comments would be. So we did not have a restroom shown on this or listed when we met with the other commissions. And we got barbecued pretty hard for not, they couldn't believe we didn't have restrooms on there. Based on that response, we added restrooms back in for discussion. I think what staff would request is we need to have a discussion with council and some sort of policy as to when, what and where justifies a restroom in a park because I, I've come forward to you folks now for 10 years, every time I have a park and, and staff's in the middle. And if we could develop a policy as to number of users or type of parks or whatever, I think we could relieve this both for staff and for council if, if we come up with a policy. So maybe we can work on that on a parallel track while GGLO is moving forward on this. It, it isn't anything that is, starts or stops the Homestead Park process. I mean, because we either add it or we don't. But I think that would be very helpful for all, all of us concerned. So with that, I, I think our presentation is done for this evening and I thank you very much for your time.
All right, we're on to final comments. Again, we have a full schedule. We still have the Housing Action Plan to discuss and as study session item. Councilmember Figaroa followed by Mayor Protem Worthington. You are on mute, Mr. Figaroa.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Cooper, I just want to clarify something that I don't think that this council has put the staff in between. I think that we ask for input from our commissioners and that's what we're asking for. And, and they give their recommendations and that's what it should be. It shouldn't be controversial. You, you seek that recommendations from them and, and, and we listen and then the council makes the final approval. I don't think that there is any real pushback. That's not the protocol by which commissions make recommendations. It's not a, a, a a tag game where this is happening. So I, I kind of respectfully disagree that we put, if you feel that way, I'm sorry that you do, but you know that that's, that's, that's on you. I don't believe that, that the process and the protocol does not put the administration in between. The commissioners are given a, a a job to do, make recommendations. You provide them feedback, you provide them the facts, you provide them information for them to make that decision and to make a recommendation. Cause it's not a decision. They don't make the final approval and it comes back to the council and then we make that. As far as council, I really would, we would, we should be cautious about how we start dictating about how we, what, what is it, when we would have a restroom or not because every park or every, and in the future, depending on the population, the diversity, the cultures and all that could change. I think that, just like we were talking about the the tax abatement, you know, we don't know what the future holds and what the needs are. And, and to make certain decisions, I think this is one of them where we should go park by park and let the council decide at the end after recommendations and looking at the whole thing. And at the end, we make that decision. It's just like we have before. We mostly agree with our commissioners, but sometimes we have disagreed respectfully and we've moved on and made some great decisions. So I, I, I would caution us make and pre-determine decisions on how, when and, and why we should have restrooms in any particular facility, I mean, park. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor Belice, is it my turn? I think you're muted.
I muted.
All right. Let's see. Well, I'll, I'll make this brief, but and I appreciate Councilmember Victor Rose's comments as well. Nonetheless, you know, and I appreciate Councilmember Victor Rose's comments as well. Nonetheless, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea for us to have a starting policy and I would suggest that I think at least it used to be, I don't know that it is today, but it used to be park planning professionals had sort of a matrix of such things and it was based on size and function. And you would turn to the matrix and you would go, ah, regional park, five acres, aha, it gets no restroom. Ah, community park, 20 acres, it gets a restroom. And it would be a starting point and we could then, whatever that says today, I have no idea. And the numbers are just made up or just that made up. But it it's an example. So we could start there and then the park commission could weigh in based, we we know it doesn't call for one, but because of these things, we think it should have one. And council could look at that and make it to make a final decision. But ultimately, it it might simplify things that we went to a impartial third-party source and I'm the guy who's advocating not to build in most cases. But in any case, so that might be a starting point. There's some professional guidance that we could use and that might simplify some of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we will have an opportunity to visit this again and it sounds like park restrooms is something that we can have a discussion on before we receive the final plan or for our consideration. So I want to thank you, gentlemen, Mr. Sandell and and Decker for coming forward with your presentation this evening and thank you for the work you've done thus far.
Thank you. Thanks for your time and input.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, our next item is our housing action plan. Mr. Swindell, you are on.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I have with us today Mr. Clay White of LDC. Our consulting firm helping us out with the Housing Action Plan. This is your second second study session and we'll be presenting using PowerPoint. And Mr. Clay or Mr. White, rather, is going to start off and our staff is going to, we're going to prompt our staff as to bring up the next slide. With that, Mr. White.
Great, thank you, David. I appreciate it and counsel. It's great to be back in front of you this evening to kind of go through our Housing Action Plan. We're going to be kind of tag teaming this presentation, so I'll go through a few slides and hand it back to to David to go through some some additional work that we've done. Next slide, please. So just some kind of objectives for our for our presentation tonight as we want to just recap you where we are with the project schedule. You know, we would like to provide you an overview of recent outreach efforts to University Place residents that came on the heels of our last presentation where he asked us to go back out and 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 get some additional feedback. So we're going to go through that. Provide a bit of an overview of Growth Management Act requirements related to housing and population. I think just trying to provide some context of kind of the relationship between this plan and what you're already required to do under the Growth Management Act for housing and and population. And then provide some examples to highlight kind of the link of the proposed actions and strategies and the housing action plans to existing Growth Management Act requirements. So you can see a couple of examples of where it might say the Growth Management Act requires you to review certain things for housing. Here's a strategy we've developed that would implement that requirement and here's an action that implements that strategy. So it's very clear on how those connections are made. So we're not doing anything weird or wacky. We're really just, you know, this is really an early action for planning that you're that you take on. And then, of course, the council is not going to take action tonight, but the continued discussion that which will be get forwarded on to June 21st where hopefully the council will take action on the plan. Next slide. So just a little bit of a recap of our March 1st council briefing. At that point, at that meeting, we reviewed the project background and goals. We provide a summary of public participation, including the review and a feedback from our advisory committee members. We provided a Housing Action Plan high-level overview, a little bit of context of where it came from, from the statute, House Bill 1923 and the grant the city received. And then a little bit of the kind of the construct of what's in a Housing Action Plan, what does it do? And then, of course, we reviewed some of the draft strategies and proposed actions that would implement those strategies. So we went through those. And then council provided feedback, including the desire to expand public participation efforts. Next slide. So you're going to see this slide twice because I really want to emphasize it for council that this plan is really just a tools in the tool belt plan. It provides ideas for actions the city can take. So you're not, you know, saying yes to this plan is not a commitment for any of the particular strategies or actions that are identified in this plan. But it gives you some ideas that you can consider. Some may be low-hanging fruit, others you may consider as part of your comprehensive plan update, which is coming up in a couple of years. A reminder that any future action will require a full public participation process because they're legislative action. So it will go through CIPA, it will go out for public comment, it will go to your planning commission and come back to you. So this is, this doesn't take any legislative action. You know, some of those actions that just as I kind of stated are maybe low-hanging fruit. There, you know, maybe some issues with CIPA or other small code changes. And one of the things that we've done in the Housing Action Plan to really kind of pick some things out is for each one of the actions we've, for most of them, what you're going to find is representative cities who have taken the same action before. So you can kind of see sometimes where you can say, hey, you know, who's changed this CIPA threshold or who's made this type of code change? And you can see examples of jurisdictions that have considered the same thing. And then the plan provides longer-term ideas that could assist the city as you plan for growth in your next comprehensive plan update. We'll talk a little bit about more more about that tonight, of just that connection to your plan update. And then I just look at this as a great beginning to a community conversation on housing and 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 why that's most important is when you update your comprehensive plan, you're talking about housing and land use, but you're also talking about public facilities and services and you're talking about parks and you're talking about transportation and it's it's this big conversation. And and all of you are so busy and you're talking, so it's really hard to focus on one particular issue for a long period of time. So this starts the housing conversation and then you can continue it. So think of this as just kind of some of those ideas. So onto the next slide. So David, I'll turn it over to you for outreach efforts. And you may be mute muted.
Oh, I am muted. Sorry. Yes, please. Next slide, please. So there was a pretty extensive outreach effort throughout this process. Initially, we met with and we put together an advisory committee. And I remember that the city council was like, well, you know, these advisory committee members, they really don't have anybody representing citizens of our community. The advisory committee really was put together as a group of subject experts, people who are in the development of housing, both and the provision of affordable housing and housing services. It wasn't meant to be a group of citizenry in this. This is this is the stakeholders out there in the community and and then once we had some feedback from them, we had two meetings with them. We we put up a website and during the course of the entire project, we've received over about 875 page views on the website, including also putting notes on Twitter and Facebook. We wrote and published nine headline newsletter articles that helped generate more website views. And some of those articles did repeat. At the council's direction at our last study session, we did a public outreach. And we, what we did was we used some of the money that we saved from what we would normally have spent on Duck Day's postcard was to actually send out a draft housing plan postcard that went to 19,914 addresses. So it went to both businesses as well as residents in two zip codes about the Housing Action Plan. And just after that went out, we put up a flash vote where we had a number of different questions about our approach to housing. We had 318 people participate in that flash vote. And in each of the questions that we asked to the flash vote, we also provided an opportunity, people provide written comments. Within the flash vote, we received over 150 individual written comments. I'm sure that most of them, they came from obviously some of the same participants, just on different questions. Next slide, please. So the the advisory committee against again, really a group of stakeholders who are in the business of building housing, both single-family and multifamily, as well as people who represent people who provide housing services, housing financing. So here's the list of our advisory committee members. We had a represented from the school district, from the planning commission, from the Economic Development Committee, first kind of human services, Pierce Transit. So again, this is again, people, subject matter expertise. Next slide, please. And then, as I mentioned, this is not meant for reading, it's just meant for providing a a visual. Here is a snippet of our Housing Action Plan website. It was regularly updated so that we could keep the public apprised of the process as we went forward. And then our IT department has an ability to keep track of how many people viewed the site and when they viewed it and what type of when it was done. And we were able to see that once that postcard went out, there was a significant number increase in in the rate of page views we received so that there was a great success to that. In addition, one of the purposes of the postcard was because we knew in COVID, a number of people were having trouble getting appointments or getting tested because they didn't have access to computers. And if you couldn't go to the website, where are you going to get access? So we sent out the postcard and we invited people that if you didn't have, or even if you did have access to web, write to me, call me and I'll send you a hard copy. And we've we received 19 sets requests and we sent them out. And we also received comments, written comments back from some of those same individuals. So they couldn't respond and then went the website, but they did take the time and some of them wrote very thoughtful and and lengthy letters. So that was really a, I thought, a smashing success. If we had the budget, we'd probably do postcards more often. Next slide, please. And this is the postcard that we sent front and back. Again, we're asking for their input. We refer to the website, the action plan. And there I also have that they can contact me and there's my contact number or my email if they want to be requested to have a hard copy. Next slide, please. These are three of the eight newsletter articles that went out. Each one went, as you know, our headline paper is published twice a month on at least eight occasions, we did that and each new edition that we sent out gave the community update as to what we did. You'll see that the middle one was a discussion of the city council meeting on March 1st. And then the third one is in response to that and showing the Housing Action Plan postcard that we sent out. Next slide, please. Here's some of the results of flash vote. Again, this is question number one. The city of University Place experiences shortage of housing for people of all income levels as the Puget Sound region continues to grow quickly. And we asked people to rate how inexpensive or expensive they thought housing was in University Place. You can see that most people thought it was slightly expensive to very expensive. And that might be a reflection of the type of perceptions people have about University Place and the high quality of life that your citizens experience here. Next, please. How should the city plan to accommodate the forecasted population growth? And people could choose up to three. Most people preferred to see more single-family homes in in existing neighborhoods, which is surprising because most of the time when I get a new single-family going into an established neighborhood, I usually hear from the neighbors. And and then, of course, new accessory dwellings is also a popular alternative. Certainly, larger apartments is not necessarily the way to go, but we did want indicate that those would belong major arterial streets. Next slide, please. And the population of University Place is becoming older. What do you think the best options for housing as you age are? And most people thought that staying in their existing single-family home had was a high priority. I might again add that each of these questions had an ability for the people who are responding. And you can see up there, it says 255 responses by locals. That is that people within University Place, but remember, we sent this postcard out to up to the people, both 19,000 addresses plus in two zip codes. So a number of these went to people in Furcrest and Tacoma as well. And so we had some people responding to our flash vote that were not from University Place. So that's why we've got that 255 responses by locals there. And and a lot of people wanted to stay in their existing single-family home. And at the end of this presentation, you'll see that the planning commission has saw that and recognized that and and discussed that. Next slide, please. One solution for housing shortages and affordabilities for a missing middle housing. And you can see that the difference are duplexes, triplexes and townhouses were the most, actually cottage housing and courtyard housing, people thought that was a neat concept as well. So that's a, that's a way that people would actually find some of this missing middle housing to be acceptable in their neighborhood. It's interesting because, you know, the city of Tacoma is doing something very similarly similar right now, introducing missing middle into their existing single-family neighborhoods. And I heard kind of mixed mixed reviews on that. Next, please. Okay, take it away, Clay.
Great. So glad to be able to provide you some feedback on the surveys that were that was done. And now we'll talk a little bit about the Growth Management Act and housing and population. Next slide. So I know that you've probably all talked about this before, but but planning and watching the state is a balancing act and you know, there's state and regional requirements for you to have a comprehensive plan and to plan for a variety of housing types and and land use and transportation, but there's also a lot of local deference. So you know, when you take a look at the Housing Action Plan, also understand that, you know, you're going to plan in the way that's best for your community and hopefully you know, some of the actions that we've we've proposed as part of this plan can fit within that context, you know, again, it's tools in the tool belt. So you know, you have the Growth Management Act and you have Puget Sound Regional Council's Vision 2050. You have county-wide planning policies that the the county and the cities work on together and then you have your local city comprehensive plan and regulation. So you know, on the state side and regional side, you know, you're allocated a lot of growth to plan for. On the local deferent side, you know, you really have the ability to plan for it in the way that is best for your citizenry. And so hopefully this plan helps support that, you know, this is not one size fits all. You have a lot of choices here and so hopefully this just provides you a big playbook. Next slide. And just to spotlight, just a few GMA requirements. So this, you know, it's a big piece of legislation, but we'll just pick out a few things. You can kind of see that nothing in a Housing Action Plan is is outside of the context of some of the things you're already required to do. So you know, GMA already requires that you have an inventory and analysis of existing and projected housing needs. And you have to have goals and policies for the preservation. And you have to have goals and policies for the preservation, the improvement and the development of housing. Your your comprehensive plan provides sufficient land for housing. And that's housing that's, you know, for the existing and projected needs of all economic segments of the community. So, you know, it's single family and multifamily. And, you know, so as a region, you're really trying to provide housing, you know, for for all economic segments. And that's not always that means that every jurisdiction has to provide for all economic segments at the same level. You know, Sumner might provide housing that's a little bit different than University Place versus Puyallup or Tacoma. But just as a region, you know, you're trying to provide housing that for all. And then, of course, you have to have sufficient capacity to accommodate housing and employment growth. And then off the housing side, but you but you know, as part of the Housing Action Plan, we provided at least some suggestions on ways at least you could look at to improve the permit process or just make it more efficient. We can always, every jurisdiction, we can 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 look at those things. So one of the tenants of the Growth Management Act is for both state and local governments to have permit processes that that process permits in a timely and fair manner. And certainly, I know that's something in working with your team that they work really hard at doing. So next slide. And just kind of how everything's connected here. So, you know, the Growth Management Act is kind of your top goal. And then you have these regional policies through Puget Sound Regional Council. And and Vision 2050, which is part of that was passed last year. And I know some of you probably attend those meetings at PSRC. Countywide planning policies in in Pierce County are just going through that adoption process. And that's a, those are policies that, you know, the county and the city share, you know, for for joint coordination on a number of issues, including housing. And your comprehensive plan has to be consistent with those countywide planning policies. So that's why it's so important that you're involved at the state and regional levels on policymaking, because your plan has to be consistent with those those bigger plans. And then, of course, your regulations that you have, your zoning regulations and other regulations implement the policy comprehensive plan. Next slide. And here's a little bit of context of why this plan is so important. So the top, the top bar up there shows, you know, kind of what a housing needs assessment is, which is part of your plan. It compares your current housing supply and trends versus what's necessary to meet your housing needs. That's awesome data. And now in that plan, you can go in there if you want to see what's going on with housing in University Place, you can you can find that information there. And then your Housing Action Plan identifies code and policy changes to close the housing gap and help prepare, you know, your communities, your plan for additional growth. And so if you take a look at that with the timing of your comprehensive plan update, your plan update is going to be due in June of 2024. So I'm sure you're going to be starting that process next year. You know, you've been working with parks and public works and, of course, planning. And so think about it as you've got some early conversation about housing and all of those ideas. But this is really how everything kind of fits together. So this would, you know, being able to have this grant and and talk about these things now was really an opportunity moment. And you don't get those in planning all the time. So hopefully, it's helpful. Next slide. And again, I'll just go back to the tools and the tool belt. Just to reiterate, if there's anybody in the audience that joined later is that, you know, this, these are ideas saying yes to this plan is not a commitment to taking each one of these actions. But, you know, it really can provide you some ideas and 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 should really help you as you're updating your comprehensive plan. So, you know, hopefully, that community conversation, you know, David just talked about all the postcards that went out and the interactions. Hopefully, you can just keep that going and and it'll get people kind of spark their interest as you lead into that process. So that's another good point. Next slide. All right, we're just have a couple more slides here. So just looking, this is where we're gonna, you can go ahead and go to the next slide. There's just three slides here. So this is just kind of that example of trying to link the Growth Management Act to the strategies and actions in your plan. So example one would be opportunities to provide a variety of housing types. And what the Growth Management Act says is that you have to provide sufficient land for housing for low income, single and multifamily, group homes. So we have a strategy in the plan that talks about, you know, what are some ideas for increasing the variety of housing types in University Place? Just things that, you know, you could do if you want to take those things on. And examples of those actions would be, you know, maybe exploring creating an R3 zone for middle housing, improving the small lot development standards. David had talked about this the last meeting of you have small lot development standards, but there's some things within the code that just haven't spurned that type of development in the city. Or improving ADU regulations. You saw in some of the comments that we received that people are interested in ADU regulations, but what are ways we could make that more advantageous? Next slide. So your next example would be options to incentivize housing and mitigate displacement. Displacement occurs when redevelopment happens. So typically, when you replace housing, it becomes more expensive. And then, of course, with our affordability issues, then where do those people go that are being displaced? So you're looking at those issues. So the Growth Management Act talks about goals and policies for the preservation, improvement and development of housing. So we have a strategy that talks about incentivizing housing and mitigating for displacement. You know, what are some things we could do? And then action examples are, you know, fast track permitting process for certain housing types that you want to encourage or incentivize. A voluntary kind of property maintenance program where you could really work to preserve existing housing and maybe incentivize people to retain it versus to redevelop it. And then maybe updating your multifamily tax exemption, which you're talking about tonight is, you know, in the right situations, what are ways that we can help bring affordable housing in a way that helps support your vision as a city? Next example.
Okay, Mr. White, I need to interrupt for a moment. I need I need to request an extension till nine thirty. I have a motion.
Mayor Blissey, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move that we extend our meeting to nine thirty this evening.
Do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Do I have any objections? Hearing that motion passes. Go ahead, Mr. White.
Thank you so much. And then example three is just ways to reduce development costs and timelines. And so the Growth Management Act talks about processing permits in a timely and fair manner. So we have a strategy that just goes through kind of ways you could reduce development costs and timelines, which is only focused on the cost the city may control. So there's a lot of things in development that you don't, including labor and timber and all these things you've heard about in the news. So some of those actions could be raising the short plat threshold from four to nine. That was something that was changed in the in state law in two thousand and one. Processing administrative approval for final plats. That's a change that was made to SEPA about three years ago. And then raising SEPA exemptions for infill development, where you've already done kind of your SEPA analysis. So that's kind of how everything is kind of connected. And you can go ahead and go to the next slide. David, I'll turn it back to you.
Yep, thank you very much. Next slide, please. So we're just going to get just a couple other slides and then we'll open it up for questions. At the May fifth meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the Housing Action Plan to the City Council. But they had some requests. They wanted to have their work plan amended, or maybe next year, they want to have the chance to go back to the Housing Action Plan and prioritize some of the actions for further for further study and possible recommend actions to the City Council. They'd like to review development regulations that might impede aging in place. And this is the comment that I mentioned earlier in this presentation, where they thought that there were some, a lot of people thought that the best way to to deal with with housing for our elderly is they want to remain in their houses. But there are some regulations, such as some of our setback regulations, that really prevent people from, say, building onto their house and adding that master bedroom on the ground floor and getting rid of that staircase. So that was one example that came up. But one of our planning commissioners, who's also a Realtor, is, you know, she said, if somebody wants to sell their house and and move on, she would, you know, and they're elderly, she would actually discourage them from selling because the cost of elder care is so expensive. And usually, by that time, the person has paid off their house and it's really a more affordable way for people to to continue in their old age. They'd like to review, rather, they'd like to consider the public comments in the hat. As I indicated, we received hundreds of written comments. And they'd like to get those comments and our response to them included in an appendix in the plan itself, so that when they're deliberating or when you're deliberating on possible actions, you can go back and some of those comments will live on, if you would, as an appendix and give some perspective to the discussion. And also, they'd like to have that flash vote results included in appendix for the same reason. When you go back and you use the housing plan, action plan, because we hope you will, that you'll have this feedback from the community at the time. Again, as Clay, Mr. White pointed out in the beginning, before you're going to take any of these actions, they're going to have, you know, some sort of public process themselves. So you'll adopt this by resolution. It won't be an ordinance when you do, and it won't have any legislative effect. But the future actions, should you decide to take them, will have their own process to go through and evaluate. Next slide, please. So tonight, the City Council has said, again, it's it's your chance to recommend approval of the Housing Action Plan. You have some options here. They can recommend approval with specific changes for the council to consider. Recommend approval, but ask that after approval, the city undertake a prioritization exercise to further discuss which actions to consider in the future per the Planning Commission's request. And then this meeting will be continued till the twenty first, when we're asking for your consideration. And you could also recommend not approving HAP. But we don't recommend this. First of all, it doesn't bind you to any future action. It's just a toolkit, as Mr. White pointed out. Any future action proposed to the plan would go through its own public process. And the grant from Congress requires that we adopt a plan as part of this process. So Mr. White's here, I'm here, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much for the thorough presentation. Councilmember, Councilmember McCluskey, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. I have, so these are recommendations, you know, we don't have to take take it all to toolkit, but we call it a plan. And right away, the Planning Commission is interested in going through this plan, prioritizing, making recommendations. So that makes me nervous to call it a plan. Because it isn't really a plan, it's recommendations. And so I don't want it to go archived as a plan. It's not a plan. It's, you know,
Really, it's a toolbox, really, yeah.
So I I don't like the name plan, because as we all know what it means right now, this point in time, but as it moves on in the future and future planning commissions will look at it, city staff and go, oh, here's a plan, and the City Council has proved it. Well, no, you know, we have not, because guess what? I'm not, I'm a City Council member that may not want to purchase land to subsidize someone else's housing right now. And that's in this plan. And I, you know, I that's kind of scary. You know, you know, we have to be really thoughtful and smart about what we're doing here. And the other thing is the R3 zoning. What does that really mean? How are we going to puzzle that into our heaven forbid, our R2? And and also, you know, what is that? It's size, scope, mass. Because, you know, the city of Tacoma, they're in in some of their R2s, they're just plo plopping, you know, four-story buildings. And I don't think our our R2 citizens would really appreciate that in in small plats to have that scope of a building. So I really don't want to call this plan. So can we change the name and to make it really to the intent that it is or prefer and preferences that so that it is not starts to get more etched in stone? And because I have a lot of questions, I have like about fifteen questions here, but you know, this is like a high, you know, helicopter purview of of everything. And it's, there's a lot of gray questionable areas. Some I'm intrigued on, others I'm not. For example, even the senior housing. Senior housing isn't all about staying in your home. It's about affordability to stay in your home. We're talking about another tax increase with transit, property taxes increases. That all impacts our seniors' capability to stay in their home. What are the amenities surrounding the seniors if we're going to create an environment where they can stay in the home? What about the public transportation that they need? Because they may be out of their cars. Governor Inslee may mandate that all of our gas powered cars are gone, and the seniors can't afford an electric car. So, you know, those are sort of things we really need to understand when we're trying to encourage some of the really cool things that are in that has come out of this plan. And I commend Mr. White for putting forward all these very thought provoking things. But each item creates a an onion that we need to layer down and to see, is it really the best fit for UP? So please, Council, change the name.
David, do you want me to, can I chat on that just really quick on the HAP name?
Yes, please.
Okay, so that just comes directly from the statute. So it's the the House Bill nineteen twenty-three said one of the options is develop a Housing Action Plan. And so it's, so that's, that's where it came from. We didn't make it up. It is, but I think that at least, you know, it's, it has a pretty synonymous meaning with the development of these strategies. It doesn't, but I, so I very much understand your point of view on that. And but that's, that's where it came from. We did not, we did not make that up. Would you like me to talk about the R3 as well, David, or did you want to chat on that?
Uh, yeah, why don't you go ahead? That's not one of the low hanging fruit, obviously, but go ahead, Clay.
So the R3 zoning was just in our review of your code. So I spent a lot of time working for cities and counties. And and so in kind of just reviewing the code for opportunities, what we kind of discovered is if you're wanting to provide some zoning, even if it was limited to encourage townhomes, townhome development or duplexes, you really don't have zoning where that's going to be built, because your R1 and R2 zone are so low density that no one would typically build townhomes, because they would just build single family detached homes. So it goes from R2, which is pretty low density, to very high density. So it kind of came out of, if you wanted to provide an area in the city to encourage missing middle housing, then you would have to have a zone that where your densities were a little bit higher. And and so really, but you're you're right in terms of it's very high level. So it's that thought provoking question. And then if you wanted to take it on, then you would say where the areas where we would even consider this, what would the regulations look like? And then you would dive down further. So it it's just, it is posing that question, but that's the point. That's where, that's where it came from, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your comments. But I do want a disclaimer in the front after, if we have to have the name, I get it. Have a disclaimer in big, bold, red type, so that we know exactly what what this plan is all about. The City Council did not approve all those ideas and comments in it, but would like to explore them for the best fit in our community, for our environment and in our in our culture and our sense of well-being. Thank you.
And before I call on Councilmember Figaro, it appears that we're going to need another extension. May I have a motion to extend till nine forty-five?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Protem Worthington, and I move we extend the meeting until nine forty-five this evening.
Okay, do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, any objections? None. Seeing none, we are continued till nine nine forty-five. Councilmember Figaro, you had some brief comments. You are muted, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Did you pick on me there, saying that, should I have brief comments, huh? So I agree with Councilmember McCluskey, but I don't think that you answered the question, can we
we change that? I don't know where you got, you, you stated where you got it from, that said allow us to change that from being a plan to something else.
He said.
I mean, it's, it's the, I was just explaining where the term came from. It came
No, I understand.
If you want to call it something on the cover, it would still be when you submit it to Commerce for, as part of the grant, it would be, you'd be submitting your Housing Action Plan. If you'd like something else on the front cover to, to address both your concerns and Councilmember McCloskey's, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I don't see why we can't do that. But I think it would, the underneath title would be Housing Action Plan, just so it's not confused that you did something else. But I don't see why that you, why we couldn't.
I think it's really important. We've had this issue before in other areas where, once it's named something, it takes a whole different animal, and is, is confusing, not only for new council members that may come aboard, or the planning commissioners, or even the public. And so I think that we should deliberately name this or highlight it as being recommendations that will be, you know, with some explanation as to what will happen in the future with this. But I, I think it's important to do that, because there, there is a lot of uncertainties and vagueness, which is, which is appropriate, considering at the high level we're at here. But certainly, being able to give us, given an indication to the public that this is a very much, or better words, flex plan. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, you had your hand raised.
Was that brief enough? No, just kidding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I too want to make the comment with regards to the plan. And first of all, you know, Clay, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the work and the time you've put into it. It does reflect a lot of thought in addressing all the key points of the proposal, or of the legislation. But I could not articulate the concerns any better than what Councilmember McCloskey has stated tonight. I think she did a, an amazing job in summarizing everything very clearly, and the concerns with this. You know, the issue with, I don't believe, in fact, I also don't believe the legislation requires that we call it a plan, just as we develop a plan, but it doesn't require us to call it a plan. But I do share the concern that a plan insinuates that it's actionable. And if the council were to adopt it, then down the road, I can see where someone's going to say, you've got a plan, now put it to work. Although the council didn't really say we were going to embrace or embody everything within that plan. So I too, and I hope the staff is, is getting the message, but I would, I would support the idea of changing or eliminating the word "plan." Call it proposal, call it whatever we want to, but other than a plan in there. You know, lastly, I just want to make a, a comment, because on the slide, it says the staff emphaticly endorses or recommends adoption of this. I, I recall back to our retreat, I believe it was, or at some point when the City Council was having a conversation with the city manager, and the question or the comment came up about staff making emphatic recommendations to the council, which puts the council then in a very awkward position sometimes to, to act on that. I would, I would rather see, here is the plan, the staff has worked it, and the staff is now presenting it to the council, and let them draw their own conclusions as to whether we support it or not. And then just leave it at that. So with that said, I, I think what has been put before us tonight by Mr. White was, was a very good, good proposal. And now I think we just need to do some massaging with it and move forward. Thank you.
Well, the, the Housing Action Toolkit is a, is a good planning document for, for future, for the future city councils, planning commission, and citizens. I don't think you're going to ever address everybody's little quirks and nuances, and every cycle being that this is driven by the private sector, basically, has some element that we're possibly not even thinking of that will come down, down the future. And it, and a toolkit allows you to assess changes in the environment and in the needs of the citizens, both currently, as well as in, into the, into the future. So maybe we can just call it the Housing Action Toolkit. And I am, I like the idea of the Planning Commission kind of taking, taking a look at it, comparing it with our current comp plan, and, and prioritizing some of the areas that they feel may require some input and some legislative action sooner rather than later, given their diversity and their understanding of our regulations, and, and maybe put, begin putting some of the toolkit into action, not asking them to open up the floodgate so that we have nothing but, you know, high-intensity development in the single-family neighborhood or anything like that. But, but I think it, we would be better suited to have some proactive research and, and actions taken by our Planning Commission that is thoughtful rather than rushed, because we have a, a particular developer out there that has an idea that they want to implement. So I don't know how, how the rest of the council feels by the recommendations that the Planning Commission made as far as their review and, and assessment of the toolkit. Okay. But I think it's a great piece of work. Yes, Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belicee. So I think the, the directions that you and the other councilmembers have been talking about is written in line with where I'm at as well. Changing the name, Toolkit is a good one. It could be another, but that's just fine. But it helps us identify what we're doing and not confuse folks with what our intent is, or at least how far this is. Prioritizing some of the actions makes some sense as well. I think we'd like to understand, before the Planning Commission fully takes up implementation of any one thing, that we've had a chance to say, yes, please do this. But to help us understand which, which comes first in their minds, the chicken or the egg, which one of those things is going to be low-hanging fruit or the most important thing to do for another reason, they could articulate to us. There were a couple of other recommendations they had or thoughts, and we could take this up on another night, but I'm, I'm there with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from planning, from, from the council this evening? Because you, you are aware that on June 21st, this is coming up for council consideration. So we don't need to have it come as another study session. So if you have any questions or comments, this is the time to make it. Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I didn't say anything, because I would just say ditto to all the things you, that was raised tonight, particularly about the name, and, and the fact that we want everyone to know that, that we're calling this a toolkit, as opposed to this is something we're going to do every step of the way. So I agree with all that, and I have nothing more to add.
All right. Not seeing any additional comments, I want to thank Mr. White for, for being here this evening, and for your thorough presentation and, and thorough work on the action plan. It was a big, heavy, heavy lift. And it's evident that you did a very thorough job in understanding University Place. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Swindell, for your time and effort this evening also.
Oh, you're welcome. It's always great.
Okay. All right. Our final item on the agenda is the Council worksheet follow-up. I apologize that I was not able to make our last meeting where this was an item on the agenda. I hope that each of the council members have had an opportunity to review and read the thorough minutes that our city clerk did of the meeting, as well as the word-by-word transcript. If there's anything in the transcript from the day that did not appear in the meeting minutes that you feel we should be paying attention to as far as scheduling for meetings or works, works, study sessions, God, it's after nine o'clock, my brain's not intact anymore, for study sessions that wasn't captured in the minutes, please let me know via email, myself and Mayor Protem Worthington. But I want to thank you all for participating in the, in this unique retreat that we had this last time. It was definitely not something that I've experienced in the 10 years I've been on City Council. And I really appreciated the thorough conversation that we had, and the ideas that we freely shared in the areas that we covered that day. I know that we had extensive conversation on ARPA funds and where we wanted to go on that. And we're just waiting to get the finalized legislation from the federal government. And then we will have a thorough study session and make sure that the items that were covered not only by staff, but were discussed by, by council members, will be covered in a study session where we will have an opportunity to review and discuss those concerns again, and potentially making changes depending on what the legislation says we can use the funding for. And hopefully by then, we'll have some, some information from the county council as to whether or not they will, are open to discussing matching of sewer funds that will help drive our conversation and decision-making moving forward. So other than that, I don't have much else to say on that. I do hope that I hear from you guys if you feel that there were items that, that we should be considering for a future study session that hasn't been noted on the meeting minutes. Okay? All right. Well, not having, not seeing any hands raised, I'm going to say we are getting done earlier than our 9:45. All right. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.